Counselor Garvin?
Here.
Counselor Geary?
Oh, here.
Counselor Minky?
Here.
Counselor Chenoweth? Counselor Peralta? Counselor President Drabkin?
Here.
Mayor Hill?
Here. Thank you Claudia. This evening, we are very fortunate to have during our work session, a presentation from the Fair Housing Council of Oregon. And we are going to, we have a number on the call that are associated with the organization. But I'm going to call on Jamie Gatewood, who is the Educational Outreach Coordinator, to kind of open this up and have an opportunity to introduce her people. Just for the record, I'd also let you know that Chris Chenoweth has joined us. So we have a full council at this point. So Jamie, I'll turn it over to you.
Hi, everyone, welcome. And we're really glad that we could be here to join all of you this evening. I'm Jamie Gatewood. And as Mayor Hill said, I'm the Education Outreach Coordinator for the Fair Housing Council of Oregon. And I'm joined here this evening by Shyle Rutter. And she is the Director of the Education and Outreach Department. And also with Sam Goldberg. And Sam, can you go ahead and just give us your title again?
I'm the Program Assistant. But for the purposes of this meeting, I guess I'm the AFFH Coordinator or affirmatively furthering Fair Housing.
We are very lucky to have Sam on our team. And he wears many hats and has many expertise. So we're very glad he could be with us this evening also. And if it's okay, I'll pass it on to Shyle to introduce the presentation. She's going to get us started. And then I'll hop in later in the presentation. And Sam will be here to support for Q and A.
Perfect. And then also just to mention, we have another colleague that is here today as well, Dario Hunter. And he has just joined the team. He is our Education Outreach Specialist that is located in Bend, Oregon. So we are a statewide organization. Our mission, the Fair Housing Council of Oregon, when I say statewide, we have staff in Southern Oregon, in Eastern Oregon, in Central Oregon, in the Portland metro area. So truly a statewide organization. And we have a focused presence also in Pokemahill and Marion County, which is part of why Jamie did the work to connect with this group today. And so our mission is to end illegal housing discrimination and ensure equal access to housing. And we do that through educational efforts like this, where we're doing education about history of fair housing. And then we also do that through educating people about what fair housing law actually is, how that affects, you know, consumers, how that affects advocates, how that affects housing providers, and also how that affects jurisdictional bodies. So we're very excited to be able to be here. We're very excited also to hear that this is a jurisdictional body that is proactive around DEI work. So we're glad to be here. And then we also offer enforcement as well. So when the housing education portion doesn't work and maybe somebody is being discriminated against in a rental, we do have a hotline where people can call us and report housing discrimination that happens. So today, what we're going to talk about in this presentation is we're really going to explore the ghosts of our past and talk about how that affects us presently today. And so I'm really glad also that Sam is here as well because he can talk about the importance of land use planning and zoning and creative inclusive communities so that we're not repeating the mistakes that we have made in the past. Now, the history of how, so Kylie talked a little bit about our bus tour that we do. And the history presentation is based off of that. And how the bus tour came about and these history presentations came about is my predecessor Diane Hess was in Southern Oregon, in Grants Pass. And she was doing a presentation about fair housing law to landlords. And in that presentation, she included a portion about the history of the prominence of the Klan in Oregon in the 1920s. And during one of the breaks, one of the landlords came up to her and said, "Well, you know, if you want to know a little bit more about the Klan in the Grants Pass area, if you just go around the corner to Elks Lodge and go up in the attic, that's where they store all the old Klan robes." She did not in fact go around the corner to look at the Klan robes. But what it made her think of is there are these ghosts that are surrounding us at all times that we are not even aware of, right? Our ghosts in the closet, ghosts in the attic. And so that's really where we started as an agency, talking about these histories. So let's talk about first, before we start talking about the history, let's get into where we are now. So Oregon's demographics. Oregon is a very white state. We have less than 2% of a population of African Americans in this state. Nationally, the statistic is African Americans make up 13% of our nation's population. By the end of this presentation, you will understand why that number is so different for Oregon. The short answer is Oregon was specifically engineered to be a white state. And we still see that history playing itself out today. What we also see is concentrations of people with the same race and international origin in neighborhoods and communities. And we're going to talk about that phenomena as well. So psychologists at Yale recently ran a study. So in 2017, ran this study. And the study was asking these two basic questions. We're going to focus in on this second question. For every $100 in wealth accumulated by an average white family, how much wealth has the average black family accumulated? And I want you to look at those options that are there. 0 to 25, 26 to 50, 51 to 75, 76 to 100, or 100 and more, okay? What this study was really looking at was what whites' perception is of wealth accrual of black families. What they found with this study is that perception versus reality are extremely different. Whites estimated that for every $100 that they earned, that a black family would earn approximately $83. In real life, what is accrued in wealth is about $5.04. So when we are looking at this huge, huge separation between perception and reality from a fair housing standpoint, we can actually relate this to the fact that neighborhoods are still very, very segregated. When we look at things, when we look at maps, we can still see that communities are very segregated. And what happens with this segregation is then that whites do not actually have an accurate picture of what is going on in other racial groups. So here's a quote. "If the racial wealth divide is left unaddressed and is not exacerbated further over the next eight years, median black household wealth is on a path to hit zero by 2053. And about 10 years after, it's projected that racial minorities will comprise the majority of the nation's population. Median Latino household wealth is projected to hit zero 20 years later or by 2073. In sharp contrast, median white household wealth would climb to $137,000 by 2053 and $147,000 by 2073." And this quote comes from the Institute for Policy Studies and Prosperity Now. So huge divides that we're seeing, and this is projected to continue if it is left unaddressed. So how did we get here? How did we get to this place that we're at now? We're going to go all the way back. We're going to talk about the time that Oregon, you know, was becoming a territory. What we saw as that was occurring was decimation of native populations. So by the mid-1800s, 80% of the Willamette Valley population had died from epidemics. And that's epidemics brought by whites into the area. And the majority of those that were remaining were forced onto reservations. Then in 1850, we see the Oregon Land Donation Act. I don't know about you, but I learned about the Oregon Trail when I was in school. And one thing that they never taught me, growing up in Carney, Nebraska, which is right along the Oregon Trail, one thing that they never taught me was that the Oregon Trail was for whites only. So for people to actually get a parcel of land at the end of the Oregon Trail, which is why people were going on the Oregon Trail, they had to be white to get that parcel of land. It was also written into Oregon Territory Law that if somebody was half-white, half-Native American, they could get a significantly reduced parcel of land. But no other groups could get land. So we're really looking at from the very beginning, when Oregon is a territory, people who are able to get that land, people who are allowed to settle in this area, it's for whites. So literally, this area of the country was engineered specifically to be for whites. Now, Oregon was the only state to exclude African Americans. So let's talk about what this means. There was this debate when Oregon was going to become a state. Would it be a free state or would it allow the institution of slavery? What was decided is that Oregon Territory and Oregon as a state would not allow the institution of slavery. We would love to think that this is because it's the correct moral decision to make. However, the decision was made because it was felt that the institution of slavery would create unfair work competition. However, it was also decided that African Americans would not be allowed to be in the territory, would not be allowed to be in the state as well. And so there were actually laws written into our constitution, written into the Oregon Territory laws. So in Oregon Territory laws, it said, if an African American was found in the Oregon Territory, that they would receive between 20 and 39 stripes, which means whippings, across their back by the Constable of the proper county every six months until they left. So the message is very, very clear. You are not allowed. There's a story of Rose Jackson. She was a woman that was enslaved by a family who lived in Missouri. They had decided to make the journey on the Oregon Trail to get land at the end of that. As the story goes, she had actually asked the family to take her with them because they were originally going to leave her because she was not allowed to be on the Oregon Trail. So to be able to take her on the Oregon Trail, the family constructed a very small wooden box with two holes in it at the top. And Rose had to travel inside of this box and was only allowed to come out under nightfall. If you're ever at the end of the Oregon Trail Museum in Oregon City, they have a replica of this box. It would be painful to make a journey that is months long inside of this wooden box, only to be allowed to come out under nightfall. So that really gives you an idea of the tenor of the times. In 1859, Oregon was admitted into the Union as a free state, but with exclusion laws specifically written into the Constitution. That language, well, so the exclusion laws were eliminated in 1927. However, the language was not actually removed until 2002, which also sends a very clear message. There was also, in addition to Oregon and Oregon Territory excluding, segregating, discriminating against, you know, African Americans, it also was discriminatory towards the Chinese. So in the 1850s, we start seeing Chinese arriving into Oregon. And in 1859, the Oregon Constitution prohibited Chinese from owning real estate. One of the things that we know from a housing perspective is that if a government wants to disempower people, one of the ways to do that is to block access to equal housing opportunity and equal housing choice. So in 1859, we have these laws written into plays that say Chinese cannot own real estate. This of course affects generational wealth over time and affects opportunity over time. The language, this law was not repealed until 1943, when China was our ally in World War II. So in 1861 to 1863, we start seeing large numbers of Chinese moving to Eastern Oregon, to Southern Oregon. That's following the discovery of gold in those areas. And the Chinese were the largest minority in Oregon by the mid-1880s. And they did really difficult manual labor, like mining, like railroads, building bridges, tunnels, roads, digging canals, canneries. Not easy manual labor. And they oftentimes lived in segregated Chinatowns. And to be clear, they lived in these segregated Chinatowns because it was safer for them to live in Chinese, in these Chinatowns. It was also written into laws in certain places as well. So in Portland, interestingly enough, there was the second largest Chinatown on the West Coast, located in southwest Oregon. So what we think of as Chinatown now in Oregon is located in northwest Portland in that area. But the original Chinatown, the second largest one on the West Coast, was located in southwest. If anybody knows Portland, it was at the corner of Second and Alder in that downtown area. And it was a really vibrant Chinatown. I mean, imagine, second to, you know, San Francisco's Chinatown. However, the city started to move to shut down this Chinatown. And they did that through beautification projects, which then displaced this population. There was also a flood which further displaced this population. Ultimately, they moved into the northwest area of Portland because that had been Japan town Nihonachi. And the Japanese had been incarcerated in World War II. So that housing was, you know, empty. And so then the Chinese community started to move into there, into Nihonachi. Now, the picture at the bottom right, if you see that picture, that was actually a very large communal Chinese garden that was located right by where Providence Park is. Now, that land was actually considered extremely undesirable because it was flood prone, it had Tanner Creek, which ran above it. Now Tanner Creek still runs there, but it's, you know, in big tubes underground instead. But this land was undesirable. So the Chinese farmers actually moved in. They started to farm it. They shared the work communally. They shared the profits communally as well. And gradually, the city also moved to shut down these Chinese gardens. So put policies and rules in place. For the items that they would sell, the produce that they would sell, the city started to put restrictions on what was allowed to be sold. And it was the things produced by these Chinese farmers. However, the things that whites had created, like, you know, milk, bread, ice, those were still allowed to be sold. Interestingly also, if we look at the city of Portland, it started to take that land back for more of these sort of, you know, beautification or larger sort of projects that were happening. And one of the projects was to create Multnomah Athletic Stadium, which is now Providence Park and the Multnomah Athletic Club. So gradually, the city started to shut down these gardens. Now imagine if you were picking up a friend from the airport and wanted to spend some time in Portland and, you know, take people to these Chinese gardens, what an amazing vision it would be if it was actually still in place today. But ultimately, it's not because the city had passed these policies. And those past policies still affect us today. Now, the Chinese were experiencing ongoing harassment. So the Chinese miners were robbed of their gold dust. And then in the 1880s, an economic depression hit up and down the West Coast. And what we know is that during challenging economic times, people look for someone to blame. And oftentimes, that will be immigrant populations, refugee populations. And this was no different. So the Chinese were blamed for the economic recession. And so then in 1882, we see the Chinese Exclusion Act be passed. And what that meant was that the Chinese were no longer allowed to enter into the country. Now, this creates a problem, of course, because the Chinese were doing very difficult types of manual labor. So put a pin in that because we're going to come back to this point. Now, the Chinese Exclusion Act was actually not repealed until 1943, again, when China was our ally in World War II. And what we saw is we saw anti-Chinese violence up and down the West Coast, in Eastern Oregon and Southern Oregon, where there were those Chinese miners. And then in the late 1880s, what we saw is that the Chinese were leaving Eastern and Southern Oregon, and they were coming to Portland. Part of why they were doing that is because the mining jobs, the railroad jobs were all drying up. The other reason is because of violence. Frankly, it was safer for them to move to Portland and to live in community. But not that that Chinatown was without violence as well. There were still violent acts that happened within Chinatown that was whites perpetrating violence against the Chinese. And then we come to one of the bloodiest crimes in Oregon's history. It's called the Snake River Massacre. The Snake River Massacre was actually sealed into court records and almost lost from history, until there was a reporter in the 1980s who had heard about this and started to get curious and do some digging and was able to get the court records unsealed so that this story could actually come to light. So in May of 1887, seven white men robbed and murdered and mutilated the bodies of 34 Chinese miners. And this happened in Eastern Oregon on the Snake River, not far from Lewiston, Idaho. There were only three people that were ever brought to trial for this. This is literally one of the bloodiest hate crimes. This is the bloodiest hate crime in Oregon's history. And only three people were brought to trial, but none were ever actually convicted. There was a man who went to the trial and watched the trial when he was a child and then later got interviewed about it in the 1950s. And his quote goes something like, you know, "Because it was Chinese that had been murdered, nobody seemed to do anything about it. Nobody seemed to care. If they were white people that had been murdered, something likely would have been done about it." You can now go to Chinese Massacre Cove. There is a little monument that's put up to actually, you know, memorialize those lives that had been lost there, who had been taken, those people that had been murdered that day. So that's, that's a piece of our history. Okay. We're going to switch gears. We're going to talk a little bit about the new century. So we're going to come into the early 1900s. What we start seeing in Oregon is we start to see tiny African American populations pop up around the state. And they're all clustered near railroad stations. Now, many of these people were relegated to doing very menial tasks like, you know, bellhops, red caps, boot blacks, the shoe shiners. Even though many of these people were actually college educated, but because they were black, they were not allowed to do jobs that they were very qualified to do, like engineers, like conductors. So they were blocked access to earning income, which would have brought them opportunity. And then in 1902, there was a lynching in Cusay of Alonso Tucker. Alonso was a man who owned a boxing gym. He was, he was accused of having attacked a white woman. And then he was, you know, put into jail. And then there was an angry mob of 200 to 300 people who were coming to the jail to try to get him. He was able to escape the jail and he went into hiding. However, somebody then found him, shot him in the leg. They threw him in the back of the truck. They were taking him to lynch him. He died on the way, but they still hung his body. This lynching that happened, there was really not much notice given to this story of Alonso Tucker. It was reported that it was an orderly mob of 200 to 300 people. But frankly, we know that orderly mobs do not lynch people. Where this happened is now the high school football stadium. The museum now has put up an exhibit to remember the life of Alonso Tucker and to talk about what had happened. And now there's also a movement to put up some small type of memorial as well in the location that this happened. This also gives you an idea of what is still happening in this area of the country. We saw also discrimination in public accommodations. And there are sundown laws throughout the state. So those sundown laws, sometimes were on the books, sometimes were just posted on signs throughout town. But it said, people of color, black especially, had to be out of town by sundown or else they could face legal consequences. They could, you know, experience frightening acts of hate and harassment as a result of this. These laws were supposed to come off of the books in 1964 with the passage of the Civil Rights Act. However, we know that some towns in Oregon still practiced these into the early 1970s. Then there were also other mechanisms, like the Realtor Code of Ethics, that said if a real estate agent sold a house to a black family in an all-white neighborhood, that they would lose their license. So more mechanisms to restrict equal housing choice, equal housing opportunity. And there were restrictive covenants written into the deeds of homes that said if somebody, it would say that nobody of color was allowed to live in the home or own the home. So written into the deed of the actual home, sometimes they would be allowed to live there, but only as a servant. Even though those deed restrictions are no longer legally enforceable, what we see with that footprint of those deed restrictions is many of those communities are still a majority white. Now, let's talk about the impact of race and nationality on valuing real estate. So the American Institute of Real Estate Appraisers used this list to actually rank who would be considered most valuable for a neighborhood. So this is where we start to see more of the construction of whiteness and value being attached to that. So if you look at this list, at the top, you've got English, German, Scotch, Irish, Scandinavian. Number two is northern Italians. Really interesting, because if you look further down on this list, you see eight southern Italians. They're from the same region of the world. However, what is different between northern and southern Italians? Northern Italians are lighter complected than southern Italians. Notice on this list that Native Americans don't even make the list, right? So here is a very formal mechanism to continue housing segregation, to continue redlining. So Oregon's Ku Klux Klan. There was this anti-immigrant sentiment that was growing in the 19-teens and into the early 20s. And so with that, we see the growth of the Klan nationwide. They would use that movie, The Birth of the Nation, which is touted as the first major motion picture. And they would do public showings to try to recruit more members into the Klan. And Oregon had the largest Klan membership per capita in the United States. The picture to the right is actually a parade, just a regular city parade that the Klan participated in. And this picture comes out of either Ashland or Grants Pass. I can't remember which one. By 1922, Oregon had 58 full-fledged active clavins. And there were seven additional provisional clavins, so 65 clavins throughout the state. And when I say throughout the state, I mean throughout the entire state. There were prominent members of government, like Governor Pierce, who was Klan affiliated. And then also, we would see that throughout the cities and also throughout the towns as well. People in leadership positions, police positions, people owning, you know, newspapers, all of that. And you might wonder, what were the issues that the Klan took up in Oregon? Especially considering that we had such a small population of African Americans. Well, they took up an anti-Catholic moniker. Oregon was only 8% Catholic at the time. However, it was reported in one of the newspapers that Catholic churches celebrated the birth of boys by burying guns and ammunition underneath the church for the day that the Pope would try to overthrow the American government. So that was some of this fear that was getting perpetuated. Now, interestingly, who was Catholic that was moving into Oregon? A lot of Southern and Eastern Europeans. Some of the activities that the Klan also organized were legal, like boycotts. They helped to pass the Alien Land Law, helped to get ballot measures passed. And then they would also have what was called necktie parties, which is a lot like waterboarding. Where somebody is being terrorized to the point that they think they are going to die, they would have a noose around their neck. And at the very last moment, they would be released after being tortured, harassed, terrorized. This was not only intended to terrorize the individual experiencing it, but terrorize the entire community that the individual belonged to. There's a story of a woman named Nevada Standish also. She's a woman who tried to come forward. She was in the middle of the night, attacked in her home by robed and hooded men who branded on her chest with a hot iron the shape of a cross, so seared that into her flesh. When she was attacked by these robed and hooded men, she recognized the voice of the police chief and his assistant. A Portland paper actually reported this. But she was living in Tillamook at the time. So she was, she was a woman who wore low-cut dressers. She refused to join the ladies auxiliary, which was the women's branch of the Klan in Tillamook. Her husband was rumored to have been Catholic and was away that evening. He was in Portland. And so she was attacked in her home. She came forward and she tried to say something about what had happened. Now, Tillamook is a town that was completely controlled by the Klan. We're talking the mayor, we're talking the police chief, we're talking the owner of the newspaper, the Tillamook Headlight Herald. He printed a story that said she had done it to herself, that she had made it up, that she'd been confused. Now, later on, there were minutes that were discovered from one of the Klan meetings. They had taken minutes. And the minutes revealed that she had been summoned to meet by the Oregon Klan Grand Dragon. And they met for some time. And after that meeting, she refuted her story. That gives you an idea of the power of the Klan at that time. Now, by the mid-1920s, we see the Klan in Oregon start to shrink dramatically. And part of that was because of the passage of the 1924 Immigration Act. So that 1924 Immigration Act really became this unifying force where the Klan all had something to work on, to push towards together. And so it was this immigration act. What this act did was it dramatically reduced immigration from Southern and Eastern Europe. This is the immigration act that was in place that made it so that Jews trying to escape from the Holocaust could not escape to the United States. What this act also did was it gave preference for people from British Isles, Germany, and Scandinavia. And it said, no Asians, Africans, or Arabs. And it really tied the economic recessions and the unemployment that was happening towards immigrants that were coming in. So we continue to hear that same rhetoric, that it's the immigrants, it's the immigrants, right? Challenging economic times, look for someone to blame. Calvin Coolidge, when he was signing this into law, he said, "America must remain American." The Klan also started to diminish dramatically because of corruption that was happening. There was, you know, pilfering of dues that people were paying. And then also scandals that were happening as well internally. So let's talk about the impact of the creation of the FHA, the Federal Housing Administration. So during the Depression, there was innovation which changed access to home ownership and wealth creation and accrual. Before the FHA, people would have to put 50% down on their home. And then they would have five to 10 years to pay off the balance of the home loan. With the backing of the FHA, we see the loan structure created that is still in place today. So people put twenty percent down on their home and then they have a thirty-year fixed rate mortgage. We still see that today with the FHA. However, the problem with the FHA is that they used federal underwriting standards which incorporated de facto racist standards. What I mean by that is that real estate valuation list that I showed earlier, that ranked people based on national origin and color. That is what the FHA used in making the decisions for who to loan money out to. That is what the banks used in deciding who to loan money out to. So between 1934 and 1962, the FHA underwrote a hundred and twenty billion dollars in loans and fewer than two percent, fewer than two percent of those loans went to non-whites. Now, another piece to throw in here is that the GI Bill was created to also help, you know, create access to homeownership and educational opportunity. While African-American GIs that served in World War II, basically the same, the same system was used in deciding who to give money to. So even African-American GIs that had served our countries, less than two percent of those GI home loans went to our African-American veterans. So we're seeing system after system after system created to create this wealth divide that we see today, to create this, you know, this system, um, this divide that we have. So December seventh of 1941, that's the bombing of Pearl Harbor. So let's talk, we're going to shift again, we're going to talk about the Japanese here in Oregon. So remember when I said when the Chinese Exclusion Act happened and the Chinese were no longer allowed to enter the country? That created a problem and a work shortage. So the Japanese then were brought in after the Chinese Exclusion Act. The Japanese grew the majority of Oregon's produce and they were very, very successful farmers. And then the Alien Land Law was passed. And what the Alien Land Law said was that if somebody was not born in this country, they could not own land. So this is where we started to see Japanese then buy homes in the name of their American-born children or in the names of friends or, you know, friends or neighbors. And there was this growing white resentment towards the Japanese and Japanese farmers and their success. There were four thousand Japanese in Oregon and the largest community was in Hood River specifically because it is an agricultural area of our state. Portland's Japan Town. I talked a little bit about that before, Nihonachi. That is in northwest Portland and it was a very vibrant town. There were Joss houses, there were religious houses, there were stores, there were theaters, there were laundries, there were, I mean, you name it. It was a fully functioning Japan town. And that was located in northwest Portland as what we think of now as Chinatown. And there's really not much history of that Japan town there today. There is some, but not much. And then comes Executive Order nine zero six six, which ordered that anybody, anybody of Japanese ancestry that lived west of Highway ninety-seven would be incarcerated. Anybody. So where they were incarcerated in Oregon? They were incarcerated at what is now the Portland Expo Center. Originally, it had been the Oregon Livestock Pavilion. So literally livestock pavilion, livestock yards where they are selling animals. And it was hastily converted into what was called the Portland Assembly Center. Talk about naming something to try to soften what it actually is. There was fences, there were barbed wires, there were armed guards. It was an incarceration camp is what it was. The Oregonian ran an article that said Portland would be the first U.S. city to rid itself of Japs. A hundred and twenty thousand people lost their homes in this incarceration. Two-thirds, two-thirds were United States citizens. There was never any act of treason that was ever found. So, one of the problems with incarcerating the Japanese is the Japanese did a lot of the agricultural labor in this area of the country. So there was a problem that there was not enough manual labor to actually help to harvest the sugar beets in eastern Oregon. There is, uh, there was a quote that came out of, um, one of the ammunition companies that said that every time a sixteen-inch military rifle goes up in smoke, a fifth of an acre of sugar beets, um, sorry, yeah. No, every time a sixteen-inch military rifle goes off, a fifth of an acre of sugar beets goes up in smoke. So that tells you how many sugar beets are actually needed to be produced to support the war effort because the alcohol pressed from those sugar beets is used in creating ammunition. So there were Japanese-Americans that were allowed to live in eastern Oregon and work the sugar beet fields. And they lived there without the barbed wire, they lived there without the armed guards, but they were like, you know, indentured servants because they had to work the land. Also, the Braceros were brought in. Between nineteen forty-two and nineteen forty-seven, more than fifteen thousand Mexican men came to Oregon specifically to work in agriculture. And they lived in segregated housing, the Braceros and the Japanese. And there were terrible living conditions. Many ended up getting hypothermia. And the worst living conditions seemed to be with the Mexican men that were doing this work. Now, there was a third group who was also brought in to do this work and they were, um, they were POWs, German and Italian POWs. And they actually were treated better than the Japanese and the Braceros. So they were allowed to not work on Sundays, they were allowed to go into town. However, many businesses had signs that said no Mexican and no Japanese. So likely the POWs were getting treated better because they looked less foreign. What I want to say is, these Japanese families, many of them had sons that were fighting overseas in World War II at the time. And this is how they're being treated. So let's talk about World War II and African-Americans. So there were African-Americans that signed up to serve in the United States. However, they were not allowed to serve overseas because they were considered too much of a risk. So there was a group called the Triple Nichols, the Five Hundred and Fifty-Fifth Airborne Battalion. They were, um, paratroopers, African-American GI paratroopers. And they were highly trained like the Tuskegee Airmen. And they were, you know, stationed in Pendleton, in White City. And their job was to put out Japanese balloon bombs that were released. However, they received very much of the same treatment of, you know, certain businesses would not serve them, even though they are serving our country at the time. So not receiving equal treatment in public accommodations. Ultimately, the military put, you know, put a stop to that treatment. But it still gives you an idea of what's going on in the times and the separation, even when people are, you know, stepping up to serve our country. Now during World War II, we saw, also saw, Oregon saw a huge increase in the African-American population. And it was specifically people moving to Portland, many moving, migrating from the South, moving to Portland to work. So before the war, two thousand African-Americans lived in Portland. And then twenty thousand came to Portland to work in the Henry J Kaiser shipyards. So that is Henry J Kaiser of Kaiser Permanente. So he had shipyards and was creating these huge ships, you know, to go into World War II. However, didn't have enough workers. And so he was advertising nationwide. Now, when workers started coming and flooding this area, there was not enough housing. And certainly, you know, Portland itself was redlined. African-Americans were only allowed to live in specific neighborhoods because of some of those, you know, those lists, those institutions that were already put into place, those systems. So Henry J Kaiser basically strong-armed the city of Portland into creating a housing authority to create housing options for workers that were coming to support the war effort. And so the Housing Authority created two different segregated public housing projects. One was called Giles Lake Apartments. And those are located, if you know Portland at all, where the Montgomery Park Building is now, in northwest Portland. Now Giles Lake certainly is, you know, shut down, demolished at this point. However, there were segregated living conditions and certainly worse living conditions for African-Americans there versus whites. And then there was also the city of Vanport that was created. Now Vanport was the second-largest city in the state of Oregon. And it was completely destroyed in a flood. However, during World War II, Vanport was basically, like I said, second-largest city. And it was relatively integrated in a very segregated state. What I mean by relatively integrated, housing is still separated. Okay? So groups live in different areas of Vanport. However, all of the services were integrated. The twenty-four-hour childcare that they had, the schools were integrated, the shopping centers were integrated, the, um, movie theaters were integrated. Everything was integrated about Vanport except for the living, where the living situation. So very, very integrated, really, uh, a forward-thinking model community, especially for the history of Oregon itself. Now let's talk about after the war. In nineteen forty-five, there's this anti-Japanese sentiment. So in Hood River, many people were trying to return after being incarcerated. However, what they were finding is they were finding that they were turned away from rentals, home loans. Many were not allowed to reclaim their family farms. The Oregon Legislature, of course, you know, passed a law saying that people could be freed from their incarceration. Most people spent about nine hundred days, you know, behind those fences with the barbed wires and the armed guards. There were signs that were very prolific that said, you know, no Japs allowed. There were homes in Lake Labiche that were burned to the ground. Lake Labiche is an area outside of Kaiser. It had, you know, a lot of agriculture going on, a lot of Japanese and Japanese-Americans lived there. And so when they were trying to return to their homes, their homes were burnt to the ground. Post-war challenges for African-Americans, there were no jobs after the war. The unemployment rate for white was ten percent. The unemployment rate for African-Americans was fifty percent at the time. And there was pressure to leave Portland. Half of, half of people did leave Portland. The American Red Cross was giving out one-way tickets. And then in nineteen forty-eight, as I said, Vanport flooded. With Vanport flooding, again, that was the second-largest city in Oregon. It had the highest population of African-Americans in the whole state. And so with Vanport flooding, it meant that people had no place to live because areas of cities, towns were redlined and basically said, "You cannot live here." So there was an area of Portland where they were allowed to move into, it's the Albina Neighborhood. Albina Neighborhood had a population density six times the rest of the city. And the city did very little to keep up the infrastructure of that area of the city. So really, living conditions that are not really livable. So let's talk about the beginning of change. In nineteen forty-eight, the Supreme Court hears a case, Shelley versus Kramer. Thorgood Marshall argued this case in front of the Supreme Court. And what it said was deed restrictions were no longer legally enforceable. So what this means is it's going to get more difficult to maintain segregated neighborhoods. In nineteen fifty-three, Oregon passes its own public accommodations law. Now Mark Hatfield, who had been our governor and then went on to be a senator, he went to Willamette University in Salem and he was part of a fraternity called Beta Theta Pi. Beta Theta Pi was the only fraternity that would allow students of color to join. So this fraternity decided that they wanted to bring Paul Robeson, who was a singer, who was an actor, who was also an activist. They wanted to bring him to Willamette University to speak. However, they couldn't find any hotel in the area that was willing to let even a famous black person stay there. So Mark Hatfield's role with his fraternity was to be transportation for Paul Robeson. So he would drive Paul Robeson from the Benson Hotel in Portland to Willamette University for the speaking engagements. However, when I say Paul Robeson stayed at the Benson, right? It doesn't sound all that bad, but he was not allowed to use the accommodations in the Benson. He was not allowed to use the restaurant, not allowed to even enter in through the front door. So he certainly did not have equal access. Imagine how difficult it would be for African-American families or people who are not famous to try to find safe, stable places to stay. In nineteen fifty-nine, Oregon passes its own fair housing law as well. However, with that, we still see Realtors and landlords continue to steer and continue to segregate. We still see discrimination happening in public accommodations as well. And we still see those sundown laws continuing into the nineteen sixties and in some Oregon towns until the early seventies. Now, with the Civil Rights Movement, we see the passage of the Federal Fair Housing Act. The initial Civil Rights Act passed in nineteen sixty-four. It was discovered very quickly that if housing was to be included in that initial Civil Rights Act, that the Civil Rights Act would not pass. Because even people who were sympathetic towards civil rights wanted to keep their housing segregated. So the fair housing, the housing portion of the Civil Rights Act literally had to be removed or the initial Civil Rights Act never would have passed in nineteen sixty-four. And then the Fair Housing Act then went to committee and it stayed dormant in committee. The committee head was very conservative and would not even hear, would not even hear arguments about the Fair Housing Act. So it was basically dying in committee. And then in nineteen sixty-eight, Martin Luther King Jr. is assassinated. There are riots in over a hundred and twenty-five cities. The president at the time, Lyndon B. Johnson, was a proponent of the Fair Housing Act. He urged Congress to speedily pass the Fair Housing Act as a way to try to quell the rioting. So I would love to say that the Fair Housing Act passed because it was, it was, you know, the more benevolent thing to do to say that integrated housing, equal housing opportunity is really important. However, it was really passed as a tool to try to quell rioting. It was the most difficult piece of civil rights legislation to pass, even more difficult than the Voting Rights Act of nineteen sixty-five. What the Fair Housing Act did was it addressed both discrimination and also segregation. And again, passed one week after the assassination of Dr. King. So let's talk about how this past that we've been talking about meets the present. We have a quote on the right of the, of the presentation here that says, "Those who do not remember the past are condemned to repeat it." So we still live with these ghosts of our past. Oregon has a history of discrimination, of segregation, of displacement, of intimidation. So why is Oregon a very white state? Frankly, because it was engineered that way from its very creation. Why do people live where they do? Well, at times it's because they've been redlined, forced to live into certain neighborhoods. Sometimes it's because they're being displaced because of gentrification and they're being displaced into other areas. And usually areas that are worse than where they'd originally been living. Sometimes it's because they have to live in community because of safety issues. Why do people of color tend to have less wealth? People of color have been blocked housing opportunity through different layers, different systems in place over time. So what we know is that history repeats itself. We saw this theme of, you know, people looking for someone to blame during hard economic times. And oftentimes, that is minority groups. It's the belief of threat of immigrants and foreign religions on this American way of life. We saw that with the Chinese Exclusion Act of eighteen eighty-two. We saw this with the Alien Land Law of nineteen twenty-three. We saw this with the creation of the Immigration Act in nineteen twenty-four, which stayed in place until the Kennedy-Johnson administration with the Hart-Seller Immigration Act. We saw this with the repatriation of Mexican-Americans in the nineteen thirties and nineteen fifties. These are Mexicans, Mexican men, Mexican-Americans who were brought in to do manual labor. And then the country deciding, "We're going to send you back." And when the country, when our country has historically sent people back, what that has meant is putting them into boats in very unhealthy living conditions or stuffing them onto buses and releasing them in the middle of the desert without food or water to die. That's what that has meant in our country. So there's this important theme that it's important for us to stand up for our neighbors. So Lake Labiche after World War II, so after Pearl Harbor had been bombed, the pastor of the Methodist Church, the Japanese-American Methodist Church there in Lake Labiche, got a call that the American Legion was on its way to burn the church down. He called other religious leaders that were in the community. And then also he called the, um, the county super, J. Edgar Purdy. He was a World War I vet, he was very respected in the community. And they literally stood arm-in-arm at the front of that church. So when this angry mob of people showed up to actually try to burn down the church, J. Edgar Purdy stepped forward and he said, "If you do this, you're going to have to go through us. And you know, you know what you're doing here is a lie on your heart." And they were able to disband this angry group of people. Nine eleven, when there was talk of rounding up people and incarcerating them again. The Japanese-American Citizens League came forward and they said, "No, we know what this is. Our community experienced this, this will not happen again." Fort Soul, Oklahoma, where families were being torn apart at the border and children were being incarcerated. There was talk of incarcerating the children at Fort Soul, Oklahoma. And that's the site where Native Americans had been incarcerated, the site where the Japanese-Americans and Japanese had been incarcerated during World War II. And both of those communities came forward and said, "No, this will not happen here." So there's the importance of these groups coming together, us coming together. When we think about this from a jurisdictional level, it's the importance of us creating safe, inclusive communities for everybody who is part of it. Now, with this, I'm going to pass the presentation over to my colleague, Jamie, who's going to continue. to continue.
Thank you. Go ahead and share my screen. Okay. So Shail's been mentioning those groups who have been, historically have experienced more discrimination than others, and the federal government has identified them, and now we have laws that protect them. And so I wanted to go through and list who are members of those protected classes. So they are race, color, national origin, religion, gender, familial status, and disability. And then Oregon goes on to add its own set of protected classes in addition to those federal protected classes. And those are marital status, so it doesn't matter if you're married, single, divorced, those things should never come into play when you're entering into that housing market or the rental market or navigating either of those source of income. So this includes Section Eight vouchers and agency checks. Sexual orientation and gender identity. So that first one that we talked about was for gender at birth. And so Oregon goes on to protect sexual orientation and gender identity as well. And protections continue to expand in different ordinances. And then the Department of Housing and Urban Development also creates rulings and, you know, to create other, you know, clarity to the protections. And also, different court cases create clarity in the law and give us more definition around those protected classes. So housing discrimination in Oregon today, discrimination against protected classes happens during all kinds of housing transactions. It can look like, sorry, hold on, hold on, sorry, there we go. It can look like predatory loans or differential treatment while applying for housing or rental units, or it could look like real estate agents may be steering people into or out of different neighborhoods. The most prevalent area where we're seeing discrimination, at least within our hotlines, and, you know, the folks that we work with are saying that it's a lot in the rental market. This might look like housing, or landlords or housing providers having discriminatory practices or harassing tenants because of their protected class. This sometimes can be homeowners' associations, maybe breaking or creating rules that could have negative, negative effects more so on one group than others. So some of the, an example of what that could look like is maybe some of the rules are just fairly impacting families, right? So families are being negatively impacted more than others. And one of those rules could be saying, no toys can be stored on the balcony, but then they allow patio furniture and barbecues allowed to be, you know, on the balconies. And so that rule would affect families negatively more than other groups. Discrimination is less overt, but it's more pervasive than ever. So it can hide in the fine print, like those neutral-sounding rules that I just mentioned that aren't neutral at all. Discrimination, well, let's see, it's not obvious until you look at it through the right lens. So housing provider or landlord might be saying, are not outright saying, you can't live here, but some of their rules may as well be saying that because it creates a chilling effect and folks are turned away from living there. So an example of that, we heard a case out of Hillsborough when a landlord had a policy that stated, no one who lives in this building may prepare or consume curry on the premises. And in Hillsborough, there's a large population of people from India, and that's where food, where curry is a food staple. So that landlord wasn't saying, no people from India can live here, but that's how it felt. He may as well have been saying that because it created a chilling effect for that group. They felt unwelcome to live there and that it's illegal. So, and we, again, like we hear about cases like that for all of the different protected classes. And so that's why the laws are so important, because there are stories like that and statistics around every single one of them. So of all the calls that we get on our hotline, over two thousand contacts a year, fifty percent or more are, are about people who are living with disabilities. So they're the people who are experiencing that discrimination. Most often, this is concerning landlords refusing to meet reasonable accommodations for assistance animals. Sometimes they just don't know that that's the law. They don't understand that Fair Housing Act covers assistance animals and serves animals. Sometimes they, they know the law and they just didn't want to follow that law. So it can be blatant or not. That's why the Fair Housing Council of Oregon is here. We love, we just provide education all the way across the board for everyone because we want to inform everyone of the law so that they don't, you know, fall into a legal pitfall. We are very lucky that we get to work both sides of the street there. So that is really our goal, is to provide that education and help folks to understand what, what the law is so that they can stay within those laws. And what we do know is that harassment is on the increase, and it's risen about twenty percent since two thousand and sixteen. And we need to mention gentrification because it's often thought of as neighborhood being revitalized or beautified, but almost always it means a displacement of an entire community. When property values go up and rental prices increase, the people, many of whom have lived there all their lives, some folks that have low incomes, they usually have to move to find affordable housing. Community improvement should start with community input from the people living in those areas, especially historically marginalized and low-income groups. And they should always include plans to keep these neighbors in their housing and to improve that housing, and hopefully even to help them purchase the property and have more stake in their community, which they rightly deserve. So we're going to move on and talk about our area, the Midland Valley. And we, again, we get two thousand contacts a year on our hotline, and so some of the most prevalent things that we're hearing, and we're going to talk about those right now. So the most prevalent is, again, just like the, the state in general, we hear about disability. And so folks are calling saying, hey, somebody's discriminating against me because I'm by protected class. This might look like landlords giving false or inconsistent, inconsistent information at the time of application. So somebody can call and say, check if the unit's available, or say, yeah, it is, but then when they physically go to see that unit, maybe they have a disability that's evident, like they're using a wheelchair. All of a sudden, the unit's no longer available, or maybe the deposit magically doubled. So often, this could also maybe look like housing providers or landlords refusing to meet reasonable accommodation requests. We talked about that, like for assistance animals. That's illegal because assistance animals are not pets. They're needed for equal access or enjoyment of the unit. And moving on, the next most prevalent kind that we're hearing about discrimination is harassment based on national origin. So this is differential treatment because the person or family has a different national origin than that of the U.S. This can be blatant, like maybe picking through applications and just skipping folks that are from a member of a protected class. It could be something like harassment during tenancy, like getting notices for behaviors for people who are members of a protected class, but then other folks are displaying those same behaviors and they're not getting notices. So, you know, sometimes there's some investigation that needs to take place to see, you know, is it because of a protected class? And that's part of our job at the Fair Housing Council of Oregon. Another form that we're seeing is criminal history, which is a barrier to get into stable housing. This often happens at the time of application. Landlords might refuse to rent to folks with arrests on their record, which is illegal. Housing providers, they can't refuse to rent unless that arrest turned into a conviction. And even then, the fair housing laws require that landlords and housing providers consider what has shifted or changed in a person's life. So it can, they, sometimes landlords will refuse to look at how long ago a crime took place or what has shifted or changed. So an example of this could be, say, that somebody steals a laptop ten years ago, and that laptop was worth more than a thousand dollars, which could mean it could be a felony crime. And then since then, this person has followed all the steps that the law requires. They rehabilitated, there's nothing else on their record. At this point, house, or a landlord should be considering this person for tenancy because obviously they're living their lives differently, something has shifted or changed. Another, a really big one that we're hearing, which I mentioned, is a protected class in Oregon is source of income. So those are agency vouchers or Section Eight vouchers, and it's illegal to refuse those. Those are part of someone's income. And what we are hearing is sometimes it's like really obvious, there'll be advertising that says, no Section Eight. Another kind of subtle way that I feel like landlords are maybe getting around having to place a Section Eight voucher is just keeping their unit in disrepair or keeping their rent just above what that voucher recovered. And then moving on, so the Fair Housing Council of Oregon meets with our community advisory groups. And this is one of my favorite parts of the job because we get to talk to all kinds of amazing people around the state. And I get to work with the folks from the Midland Valley. And these are groups of housing providers, shelter providers, agencies that provide that around services, and members of the community. And we work together to identify overarching themes that are barriers to fair housing and affordable housing and housing access. And so those that are most prevalent that have been identified through that group are Indiism. Some of you probably have heard of that before because a lot of it is around zoning, community acceptance issues. So affordable housing is hard to come by, and transitional housing and housing, those are for those, those specific groups. And sometimes when it's proposed, there's pushback from the community because there's a misconception about who actually lives in that kind of housing. You know, there's a misconception that'll just bring a criminal element. So what we hope is to, as an organization, is to break down those, those barriers and those stigmas and talk a little bit about like who actually lives there, is families with low income and, you know, seniors that have a fixed income and people working in the service industry and all kinds of, you know, important members of our community. And so that's one of our hopes is to, to break down those stereotypes. Another is criminal history and credit history is a barrier to stable housing. We talked about that a little bit. So we need to work on breaking down those barriers. One way could be to fund more rent assistance programs and provide landlords with some protection and, well, maybe even somewhat financial protections. So if the unit is damaged, maybe we can help to pay some of that back and just kind of work also with, like, with case workers to support housing providers and landlords so that they have someone to call when they have questions. And we've heard that that is very beneficial to keep that kind of housing in our communities and make sure that we're breaking down those barriers. The other group that we're hearing about is Pacific Islanders and Latinx community, which is not listed here, but they are experiencing discrimination in our community. Oftentimes, Pacific Islanders and the Latinx community do not want to come forward. They don't want to rock the boat. They don't want to lose stable housing. Sometimes it could be because of immigration status, they're afraid to be reported. This often turns into people, you know, a lot of people living in one place, or maybe even renting in places that don't have requirements for you to fill out an application. And that could also mean predatory practices, you know, charging exorbitant amounts or keeping their unit in disrepair because they know that folks won't reach out for help around that kind of situation. Some of the big ones that we're hearing about in, in our area here, in the Midland Valley. And so fair housing laws are enforced. They, again, usually the Fair Housing Council of Oregon is contacted first when Oregonian is experiencing housing discrimination. We get two hundred-plus calls annually. Luckily, seventy percent of them are resolved locally. We can advocate for people if that's what they choose. Like, we can write a letter to the housing provider or landlord and explain like, oh, this is, this is the rule under the fair housing law. And then, you know, at that point, they can make a change and, you know, stay within the law. If, if that doesn't happen, and if they complain and prefer us, we can help to file a complaint through HUD or BOLI, the Oregon Civil Rights Division. And then at that point, an investigation would occur. So did discrimination occur? We use investigation tools, like looking back at paper trails and doing interviews, things like this. And, and then the enforcers at that point would be HUD, BOLI, the U.S. Department of Justice, Oregon Attorney General's Office, or private attorneys. And the outcomes in these situations really vary. It depends on what it was. Is it housing provider didn't realize that they, they need to accommodate assistance animal request to reasonable accommodation? Or is it something bigger, like there's neighbors that are harassing each other and it's around, it's about one of their protected classes and the housing provider or landlord knows this, and they do nothing to stop it? So chances are that will be a very different outcome. And what we do know is that law is clarified over time through court cases. So when something comes up, the, if it goes to court, they will have a ruling, and at that point, we can use those court cases to better inform our work. It could also sometimes mean fines. And so again, what we try to do is just educate everyone across the board to avoid any of those legal pitfalls. And with that, I will pass it back to Shail for closing comments.
Yeah, so we wanted to make sure that we give some space to our colleague Sam to also talk about fair housing as it relates to creating inclusive communities from land use planning, from zoning. We also had a question that came in as well from this group that really falls into the purview of how Sam works at our agency. So Sam, are you okay if I just give the floor over to you for a bit?
Uh, sure, that's, that's fine. Yeah, so the, the question that we got, which I think was from the McMinnville Planning Department, if I'm not mistaken, was whether or not the current definition of family in the, in the city code is legal. And first, I want to stipulate that we are not a law office, and I am not a lawyer. I asked with the people who work on these kind of things, who do work on land law, it does appear that there's a federal presumption of constitutionality to a restrictive family definition. That is not an endorsement of your current, current definition, just that it probably would survive a legal challenge. And that was under Nebraska versus Champaign nineteen ninety-seven. But fundamentally, the, the message that we want to push is that when it comes to zoning, zoning should constrain uses, not users. So across the state, there's a lot of different struggles that, that we have with affordability, access to affordability. And in addition to new developments, multifamily developments, and the much-needed missing middle housing, one thing that gets talked about is naturally occurring, occurring affordable housing. And very often, that is large houses that are being split up between numerous family units, so subleasing essentially. I've lived in plenty of houses like that. I'm, you know, a, a lot of young people at some point in, in their lives live in a, in a situation like that, and families live in situations like that. And the concern that, that certainly I have and other people who work on land use is that having a restrictive family definition, like what is in the city code currently, which limits to five people who are not related, who are, who are under eighteen and not related, that that can eliminate some of those opportunities for that naturally occurring fair housing where people, numerous people who are unrelated could live in, in the same house. I also thought it was really interesting that the city code does include servants in their definition of family. I assume that's, that's just an artifact of, of, you know, a much, much older code. Anyway, my recommendation would be, yes, absolutely, something that you should look at. We want codes to be as inclusive as possible and to encourage the kind of diverse communities that we want to promote. It's good for everyone. As far as what I do in terms of affirmatively furthering fair housing, which I mentioned is kind of my role here today, is that I am the facilitator for what's called the PAPA's Project, which is a post-acknowledgement plan amendment. So in Oregon land law, when any kind of zoning change happens, the state Department of Land Conservation and Development, or DLCD, needs to be notified in what's called a PAPA. And as the city council, I'm sure that you have voted on a number of these, you know, any kind of comprehensive land plan, anything like that. The state, under Goal Ten... The state, under Goal 10 of our land use laws, require jurisdictions to be working towards meeting their housing needs, housing obligations. That's something that was expanded a lot under House Bills 2001 and 2003, which by the end of this year, in fact, I think by this summer, will be fully in effect. And with McMinnville's size, you will be obligated to follow the full requirements under House Bill 2001, which eliminates single-family zoning. So anyway, anytime one of these PAPA's is generated and DLCD is notified, we also get that notification. So the PAPA's Committee, which I facilitate, is made up of the Fair Housing Council of Oregon, as well as Housing Land Advocates, or HLA, which is a land-use-oriented law firm, as well as a number of volunteers, people like former city planners. And we just look over it and make sure that the city is doing its homework, doing its job under Oregon's land law obligations, because very often, the state just becomes a kind of rubber stamp. And so if we find any problems, or if the city did a really good job, and this is the kind of land use ordinance that we want to encourage, then we will send a letter to be put into the record for both the Planning Commission and for the city council for all of these. So I think that that pretty much sums up what the PAPA's work is. Our great employee, Jean Dahlquist, frequently works ahead of time with planning departments of these different jurisdictions, making sure that, like the rest of our organization, that we get these kind of upstream solutions. So working with the people who are crafting these laws and ordinances as early as possible, making sure that everyone is following their obligations ahead of time so that it doesn't become a question down the road. So I'll turn it back over to Shail.
So we wanted to make sure that we left a bit of time also in this if there were questions that folks wanted to ask. I'm not sure normally how questions get handled within this committee. We're okay with questions being typed into the chat. That usually works pretty well for us. If folks have comments or questions as well, please feel free to do so.
We can just open it up for counselors to ask questions directly, and we won't need to use the chat. So, well, number one, just thank you for the history lesson of Oregon and giving us time to pause. And I think, you know, our lenses are developed by what we know and what we don't know. And I think having this opportunity many times to know, you know, where our upbringing from a community standpoint can have a tremendous effect on how we address things today. But then secondarily, you know, as we are looking at housing, we're looking at code and those types of things, the work that you are involved in with the Fair Housing Council of Oregon, that really helps us. And I think, I think it was Sam, you showed that there's some things within our code that probably needs to be addressed, and we know that, that it takes a fine eye to go through those codes and make sure that they're up to date and they're in line with state and federal government regulations, especially in the building arena. So we appreciate those types of things. But with all that being said, let's open it up to council to see if there are specific questions that one would have. And then I see, you know, Tom, you're on the line from the Building Department. If you have any specific things that you're concerned about from a building perspective, I think you should jump in also and be able to ask. So I'll just open it up at this point. Any questions, comments?
Shail, this is Sal Peralta, if I could just make a comment.
Yeah.
I just wanted to say thank you so much for your presentation. That was one of the most informative historical presentations I've heard, and I really appreciate the time that you and your group have taken today and just the fact that you're out doing these tours around the state. So thank you.
Yeah, thank you so much for having us. We just, we know that if what we're trying to do is to create more inclusive communities, the history is such an important part of that. So we are always really grateful when, you know, jurisdictional groups are also interested in fair housing and learning these pieces so that this can actually inform the work that you're doing so we're not continuing to perpetuate these problems that we've seen throughout time. So thank you for that comment. I really appreciate it.
I saw Zach, your hand go up.
Yeah, I promised to not only be on a question allowance, but to have zero questions. I just wanted to pass on and echo Sal's. It was just an absolutely fantastic presentation from your team. Thank you so much. It was, I don't even have questions, which is a rarity. But I think, I believe Samuel, it was just so simple how you phrase that, that was zoning should constrain uses, not users. I mean, that is just super simple, but was, that one, that was really a joy. Yeah, thank you for taking the time. And then also, while I have the opportunity, a special hello, Darius. It's a pleasure to meet you digitally. But you guys are all welcome back anytime about any topic, frankly. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Zach. Other comments or questions?
I would only echo what we've already heard, that not only was it a great presentation, but also there's just a lot of applicable information to pull into some of the work that we're already doing. I'm lucky enough to be a liaison for both our affordable housing, one of the liaisons for our Affordable Housing Task Force, but also for our new DEI Advisory Committee. So hearing the information in terms of, it gave me a lot of ideas for some of the work the DEI Advisory Committee can start working on, knowing what our Housing Task Force is already working on. Thank you.
Thank you, Remy. Tom, go ahead.
The, I was impressed by the training, as well as a couple of years ago, the display that you had available that communities can use and display in places where the community gathers, public libraries and things like that. Is that still available to communities?
We still have the display. Sam actually helps us coordinate that, traveling out to different areas of the state. I will say, we are very interested in getting the display out. We did not get to travel much this last year, go figure, not a lot of people in public spaces. So if you have a space where it could get displayed, we've even been thinking, you know, if there is a place where the display can be, you know, facing outside windows so people that pass by would see it, it's even worthwhile. So we definitely still have that display. Sam would love to help people coordinate that. Yeah, Jamie, I want to mention really quick, would you drop the link to the evaluation in the chat box for folks? Thank you.
How large is the display? Just out of curiosity. How large is your display?
Yeah, Sam, do you want to take that?
It's, there's seven panels and they're about six feet tall, if I recall correctly, and maybe two, three feet across.
Yeah, two and a half to three feet across.
Two to three feet across each, so seven of those. I'm happy to say that the Coos History Museum, we talked a lot about Coos Bay and some of the horrible instances that have happened there. They're getting the display next week, but after the end of the month, it's totally available. So if anyone from the city, any institution from the city wants to get in contact with me, I'd love to get it sent out.
Thank you, Sam. I'll go up to Counselor Adam, if I see your hand raised, and then Zach after that.
This is Counselor Garvin. I just wanted to echo what other counselors had said about the in-depth nature of the presentation, how enlightening it was for myself, and how I really look to use it in policy going forward. And then about that display, I think that would be a great thing to find a spot to display that here in the city. I mean, listening to those measurements, it's definitely not a small item to display, but I think we should be able to find a spot for it if we put our heads together, and I would definitely support that.
Yeah, what building in McMinnville has big windows that are tall, wide, and at street level? Hmm.
Yeah, we have a
I can think of a new bar that has them.
Well, maybe our regular meeting place when it's not on Zoom.
That's true. That'd be an excellent place.
In community center, our community center would also be a place that might be able, lot of traffic there when we're out of the COVID.
Arts people, you know, the Public Art Committee, and also visit McMinnville if they have some thoughts on it.
Dude, I forgot that whole council civic hall thing existed, man. Stop reminding me that we have to go back to meeting in person. I like shorts. Okay, well, I know we're at the end, almost at the end, but I, as usual, did think of a question, so I take back my whole zero question thing. And maybe this would be for your whole team to take the rest of the time, but I guess as you guys, your presentation kind of chronicled the sordid history of an effort that only relatively recently has gathered steam and started making a dent in what has been an otherwise just absolutely destructive system. What gives you guys hope in your effort going forward? What can, I mean, Frank, you know, the easy question, what can communities like us, what can people do to help? And then on the flip side, what keeps you up at night that you're worried about just totally torpedoing your effort?
Oh, these are such good questions.
And you've got a whole five minutes to solve all those problems.
All the world's problems, yeah. I would say, what, what gives me hope is that there has been such a national response. It's been really interesting to do this history presentation and talk about the riots that happened in 125 different cities that were the catalyst to get the government to pass the Fair Housing Act. So certainly seeing this civil rights uprising has given me hope that there could be some change. I would say, in that same token, what keeps me up at night is seeing some of that momentum start to quell as we have a different administration in place. Somehow people sort of thinking that things may just automatically get resolved, and so some of these issues start to come into the back burner again. So, you know, and we see this, like, you know, where, you know, Amazon for a week or two weeks was really like pushing forward stories, you know, African-American centered storylines in all of, you know, what they were suggesting for movies, and we saw Netflix do that too. And now it's sort of gone back to normal, whereas we're seeing, you know, just a lot of white faces mainly in what's being promoted. And so I would say that the forgetfulness, the ability of the white majority to just sort of forget these things is very, very problematic. I would say that that is part of what keeps me awake at night. Part of what keeps me awake at night is the concern that we still see the most marginalized populations being most affected. And I would say what keeps me awake at night is understanding that the housing crisis in this state is just continuing to increase, and who we get to see affected by that housing, that housing crisis is, you know, national origin, race, people living with disabilities, single parents, you know, trying to make ends meet with the household. And so as we're seeing housing prices rise, we're seeing those groups that typically have, you know, less wealth accrual over time, also have less access to, you know, income opportunity. We're seeing those folks get either displaced from housing or having to do things like doubling up with other people living conditions that are not really appropriate. And so I would say that is, that is something that keeps me up at night. I would say that the increase of acts of hate and harassment also that we saw from 2016, you know, just continuing to increase, that has definitely kept me awake at night. And we certainly have hopes that we will start to see that number drop within the next year or so, but it's one of those that time will tell and time takes time. I would hope that the contacts that we are getting throughout the state to do more of these history presentations, more of this DEI work continues, and that it's not just sort of this, you know, sort of facially, like expressive way of saying like, oh, yeah, we're with it and we care. But the reality is, to do this work is actually really difficult and it's really uncomfortable. So I would say one of the things that heartens me is that we're seeing people get uncomfortable, and that's really one of the things that needs to happen to continue change and to continue that momentum. So that's a four-minute answer to your question, Zach.
And then that'll give us just a closing. Counselor Chinowith has a comment. Chris?
Thank you. I was getting a little worried there. I wouldn't have time in before seven o'clock. Just want to also state that I'm grateful for the presentation, grateful for all that you guys are doing and what you've brought to us that will help us in our forming our policy going forward. I enjoyed it and just wanted to give you kudos. So thank you.
Thank you, Chris.
Well, again, we have run out of time, and again, I think Kylie has taken a note down that it would be really good to have this same presentation for newly formed DEI Committee. I'll just tell you from a mayor's perspective, we've had two conferences during 2020 with this same topic, with Kerry Kimcheck from the Oregon Historical Group does a great presentation, but I'll tell you, I liked the one tonight better. So you guys are doing a phenomenal job. So again, thank you so very much. Great meeting you, great story and history lesson for us. Again, thanks.
Thank you so much, and we look forward to continuing to work with you all.
Well, I don't know that we could have timed that better. It is seven o'clock, and again, I hope counselors, we've gone for an hour and a half now. You may want to stand a little bit, but I'm just going to kind of roll us right in at seven o'clock. We've got a lot on the agenda this evening, and we have an Urban Renewal Agency meeting after this. So I'm going to call the McMinnville City Council meeting of February 9th, 2021, to order, and I'll call on Claudia to do a roll call.
Counselor Garvin?
Present.
Counselor Geary?
Still here.
Counselor Minky?
Present.
Counselor Chinowith?
Counselor Chinowith is here.
Here.
Counselor President Dropkin?
Here.
And Mayor Hill?
Here. Thank you. Again, a couple of meetings ago, I said that we would get back into the habit of having the Pledge of Allegiance. And so at this point, Zach, would you lead us in the pledge this evening?
Sure. Remind me how we're doing this?
Well, we're going to have a flag that's going to come up, but at this point, I think you just lead us in the pledge and we'll just follow in.
Okay. Everybody ready? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. With liberty and justice for all. Oh, man, I am so rusty. Forgot the middle half of that.
Yeah, we haven't done that for
Heck of a flag going there, too.
We did get the flag, you know, waving in its glory. So again, thank you for leading us, Zach, with the Pledge of Allegiance. This evening, we have one proclamation, and it is Black History Month, and we have a proclamation for that. But before I read the proclamation, I'll turn the time over to Kylie to make a presentation to us. Kylie?
I don't have a full presentation planned, but, you know, this is, it's a historic month and it's an important month. And I'm actually, I'm not sure if McMinnville has issued a proclamation for Black History Month in the past. So I'm excited that this is something, Mayor Hill, that you're supportive of. And it definitely, it sends a message to our black community in McMinnville. I think we should take a little note from our previous presenters that things that are performative can be nice and send a good message, but we need to follow it up with real work. So I am excited that we're getting this DEI Committee kicked off. You know, we're going to talk about that tonight. But also, things like proclamations and messaging are still very important. So thank you for You know, we're going to talk about that tonight. But also, um, things like proclamations and messaging are still very important. So, um, thank you for, um, for wanting to do this tonight and I'll turn it over to you to, to read the proclamation.
Thank you Kylie, and I think you hit a very important, you know, it's one thing to, um, make a proclamation in words, but it's another, uh, to be able to go through what we've gone through tonight and have some education and understanding, uh, kind of that background within the state of Oregon. And I think we could do that all across regionally, state, you know, statewide we're looking at, but nationally. So again, I think we're just on that beginning of a journey here in McMinnville and the formation of the DEI, uh, council is going to be very helpful to, uh, the city council in, in keeping us abreast of the things that we need to be aware of. But with that being said, uh, this proclamation designation of February 2001 as Black History Month, whereas the city of McMinnville is committed to diversity, equity and inclusion as a fundamental aspect of our community. And whereas the official theme of Black History Month 2001 is the black family, representation, identity, diversity. And whereas black Americans have made valuable contributions in Oregon's economic, political, spiritual and cultural development while maintaining and promoting their own unique culture and history. And whereas we acknowledge and denounce the history of structural and institutional racism towards black Americans in Oregon and throughout the United States, which has directly resulted in social, economic health and other disparities that persist to today. And whereas black Americans for generations have sought to prevail against racial violence, injustice, inequities while leading the pursuit of equality in this country. And whereas Black History Month serves to celebrate the accomplishments, the culture and contributions of black community while honoring black history. And whereas we as a community must work together to end discrimination, to achieve true equality for black Oregonians and build a McMinnville where all residents can realize their full potential. Now therefore, I Scott A. Hill, Mayor of McMinnville, do hereby proclaim February 20, uh, February 2021 as Black History Month. In witness thereof, I have here to set my hand this, the ninth day of February in the year 2021. Signed, Scott A. Hill, Mayor of McMinnville. So we've got that proclamation. Uh, thank you for allowing me to do that. And so then we will now move to our next item on our agenda this evening, which is comments from citizens. And any interested, uh, audience member may be invited to provide comments and, uh, any comments that require, uh, any type of follow-up will be assigned to a staff member. Anyone may speak on a topic other than a matter in litigation, a quasi judicial land use matter, or a matter scheduled for public hearing at some future date. Each comment will be limited to three minutes per person. If you want to speak, you can raise your hand in the Zoom or get ahold of Claudia, um, through the, um, the ability of our chat feature. And so at this time, uh, when you come on the ma, when you come on the mic, if you would state your name and, uh, and your address for the record, we'll turn it over to Claudia. Claudia, do we have any, uh, anyone that would like public comment this evening?
Mayor, we have no one that has signed up.
Okay. Thank you, Claudia. We will then move on to our next agenda item and that would be advice and informational items, any reports from our councillors on committee and board assignments. And so I'm just going to, uh, I will start, uh, across and, uh, I'll start with Sal this evening. Sal, would you like to start us out?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. I don't have an update, uh, on my committee assignments. We haven't met since the last council meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Adam, anything for you to report on?
Uh, currently we've still got a YCOM meeting on the books for Thursday at three o'clock. That'll be digital. And if anybody wants that link, let me know and I can get it out to you. And then, uh, we're just still updating stuff out at the airport as far as rules and minimum standards go. And hopefully we'll have that in front of council, um, and through review by Amanda before Mike takes off is kind of the goal, but if we need more time, we need more time, but that's kind of our initial.
Great. If you could send me the link to YCOM, I've been trying to go to one of their meetings for a long time and I'll see if I can put that into my, uh, agenda. Uh, Zach next?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, committee updates, landscape review committee, had a meeting, nothing of note. Uh, MAC PAC met last week on Thursday, um, continued the site selection review process and discussion and actually moved forward, the committee moved forward with the recommendation to recommend, uh, the, the Lynnfield site for citing the project. Pool committee, pool subcommittees, we've had subcommittee break off to, to talk specifically about, um, natatoriums and aquatic offerings as part of the project. We've toured the Newburg Pool and we toured the Corbalis Pool and will now be prior to next month's first Thursday, MAC PAC meeting, be meeting again to digest, finalize, either hopefully finalize if that's the next step or continue the discussion at that subcommittee level, moving towards making the recommendation to MAC PAC then to make, MAC PAC make the recommendation for what the pool and aquatic offering should be in our new facility. Oregon, um, climate friendly and equitable communities rulemaking committee, um, is in between committee meetings, um, and McMinnville Active Transportation Concept Plan, uh, has the next meeting coming up on February 18th. That's my report.
Thank you, Zach. Uh, Chris?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, the Economic Vitality Leadership Council did not meet, so we're still waiting. I don't have anything to report there. The Historic Landmarks Committee did meet, um, and they voted in their new chair after some discussion over concerns about having a chair that, that might have a conflict of interest. So the, the chair that was voted in was John Mead, Vice Chair Mark Cooley. Then they, uh, worked on, then discussed and approved the Historic Landmarks work, 2021 work plan. It was passed on a unanimous vote with the only real discussion point in there of, of, of much back and forth, uh, was how to direct the 10,000, uh, certified local government grant, uh, with, and the associated planning department match. Eventually it was determined the best use would be for us to use it toward a marketing campaign to help the public awareness and education, uh, for the education projects for historic preservation. So that's where that's going to be directed. And that's the sum total of notes I have. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Chris. Now let's go down to Kelly.
Uh, not much to report tonight. Uh, the next visit McMinnville meeting will be next Wednesday at 3:00 PM.
Thank you. And then, uh, we'll go to Remy and then, Remy, if you could update us on that good meeting we had this afternoon, uh, as it relates to affordable housing, because I think we made some really good headway.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've, uh, mentioned in here previously that at our regional leadership meeting, uh, hosted by Commissioner Kula, uh, we were, uh, Councillor Minkie and I were able to, uh, engage our federal delegation and move forward with our city administration, our, um, planning department and, um, uh, have some preliminary meetings and then the representatives from Wyden's and Merkley's office today facilitated, um, a meeting with, uh, a number of, um, representatives from OHCS, um, from HUD and, um, from USDA. Um, and, and in that meeting, um, I, 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 I can, I can summarize in short, although really I feel, um, our, our planning department would be the best to, to, to report on it, um, in, in that they're the, uh, the experts of the subject matter that was discussed. But, um, but we were able to really share with them the, um, uh, anti-Goldilocks paradox that we find ourselves to, uh, in too often, where we are a city that is either too large or too small. Um, we never seem to be quite the right size to avail ourselves of any numbers, uh, any number of programming, um, and/or funds. Um, we also talked to them about some concerns as a city that we have about, uh, retaining housing in the city of McMinnville that's currently being able, uh, that's currently used as affordable housing and that we are concerned could be at risk and how could we help to bring, um, federal programming to our nonprofit housing providers to make sure that we do retain that housing. Um, as, uh, we're well aware, it's, it's, uh, it's much easier to retain affordable housing than it is to build, um, new affordable housing. Um, so we shared with them, uh, uh, not only our concerns and, and where we currently are, um, but then they were able to share back at, at great length, um, some different opportunities, um, that the, that, that we may be able, that we may be able to avail ourselves of and that our nonprofit, uh, housing partners, um, might be able to work with as well. Um, I think that's a, a good, that, would that be a good summary, Mr. Mayor, of, of the meeting today?
I, I, I would agree. I think the, the one other, we had, uh, rural development also. So we had all of our statewide and kind of regional and some national input in this and it brought together partners and they're aware of our dilemmas that we've been working with and they've given us a lot of good, uh, direction that we can move forward and we had Heather and we had Tom that were a part of that. And I think the planning department's going to be able to take tremendous value, uh, from that and moving forward. So again, uh, Kelly and Remy, thank you for taking that opportunity to get us in front of our congressional and representative.
I think the most important thing is forming the connections that we have over the last couple of weeks and talking with these people. That's really critical and we've made some really good connections, I feel.
And, and they.
Yeah, I don't worry about that, but Jeff also put forward the principal city idea, which I think it might've died on the vine and I think it's now alive and hopefully going again.
Absolutely. So again, thank you and we'll keep you updated as we move through those discussions, uh, moving forward. Let me just do two, uh, reports of, uh, of the many meetings I've been involved in. We had the, uh, McMinnville Urban Renewal Advisory Committee and, uh, I think the one thing that we spent time on was the COVID recovery, uh, facade improvement grants and we're going to be moving forward, uh, with that and giving out additional money. The other two things were, we went over our annual financial report and a budget review and those things are going to be a part of the urban renewal agency meeting after this meeting. So I won't report on that because we'll have, uh, Chair Walt Gao come and Heather being a part of that. Also had an opportunity last week to be a part of the Mid Willamette Valley, um, Advisory , uh, Transportation Committee. And we had an opportunity to again revise and look at, uh, the letter from, uh, MWAC to the OTC, the Oregon Transportation Committee, uh, with our strong recommendation to move to, uh, one and two phases on the Donald Aurora, uh, bypass. Uh, the other two things is we had a presentation on the ODOT, on the ODOT Strategic Action Plan, uh, which was really informational and that was a good hour in presentation going over equity and we were looking at the modern, uh, transportation system and sufficient and reliable funding, as one would guess at ODOT, you know, funding with, uh, state, gas tax revenue coming down. That was a big area of discussion. And then the last thing that we talked about is, um, again, um, it, it's these what are called acts, which are area advisory transportation committee and making sure that we have say from a regional perspective to the Oregon Transportation Committee. Because we've put a lot of time and a lot of effort and we know our areas and we have representation for every state, uh, road, uh, that goes through our area. And we just want to make sure that we're heard, that a state agency such as the OTC isn't making all of this, the decisions, that they will come and be a part and listen to what we're doing on a regional basis. And so that was a great discussion. We've talked about it. We've gone to the OTC, we've talked to them about it. But again, it's bringing us back and having transparency and having input on transportation issues statewide. At a local level. So that was a, that was a good discussion. Moving now to department heads and I'll just try to, uh, pick up as I see. Kylie, I see you as one of my first ones. Go ahead.
Um, nothing of note to report. We'll discuss the resolution later this evening, but, um, I did want to let you all know that there is a very important local government holiday on January 13th called Galentine's Day from, this is a nope from the Parks and Recreation TV show. Um, it is, and it is a holiday for the ladies, um, though, um, guys are allowed to participate, but it is to celebrate, um, all the awesome women that we get to work with in local government. So happy Galentine's Day to you all.
Hey, treat yourself, right?
Thank you Kylie. Uh, let's go over to Amanda.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, first, uh, on Saturday, I participated in the Public Interest Law Fair that is put on by Lewis and Clark Law School, um, where local governments and other nonprofits can come in and interview, uh, law students for summer clerkships. And I had some great interviews and, uh, selected a candidate who has accepted the offer. It's not official yet, so I'm not going to name the candidate, but I'm really looking forward to having this person on boarded for the summer. Um, I also just wanted to add a further clarification on the Historic Landmarks Committee meeting, um, just to say that there was no statement of impropriety, uh, about the past chair and she properly recused herself, um, as appropriate in the relevant meetings. Um, there was some concern about optics that was discussed at that meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Amanda.
Thank you for the clarification, Amanda.
What's that? Chris?
I said, thank you for the clarification, Amanda.
Absolutely. I, I see Susan next. Go ahead.
Hi, everyone. We are very excited for the spring and summer weather to be coming so we can get outdoors with our community and our families. So youth soccer is coming back. Uh, we're still working out the details to make sure we're in compliance with the state guidelines, but right now we're looking at a case through sixth grade youth soccer program in April and May and we'll be releasing more details in mid-February. I thought I'd also let you know that we partnered with, uh, library and McMinnville School District and we provided books and craft kits that went out to over 1,300 kids and we're scheduled to give another 1,300 in March. Uh, we started a free walking club that's four days a week. And if you want to join that tomorrow at 5:30 at Jay Pearson Park, we're going to walk the BPA trail. Um, and then we're also passing out crafter noon activities, uh, twice a month on Wednesdays at the community center. And we are also partnering with the county health and we help them distribute, uh, over 300 activity packs, masks and face shields as part of their COVID testing and flu shock clinics. So we're trying to pull out our partnerships as much as we can while we're waiting for the nice weather to happen.
Thank you, Susan. Appreciate it.
A follow-up question to that, if I may?
Go ahead.
Do, if you're able to fall, find a way to make the soccer work for the little people, do, uh, do you envision it, because it's a, it's a volunteer coach based organization. Do you find it's going to be more challenging in this time to find the coaches equally as challenging or?
We don't know yet. We are going to watch that closely. We are hoping that people will be more inclined to volunteer to get outdoors, um, just because we need that to happen for the kids to be outdoors. So we hope we will get more during a time like this, but we don't know yet.
Well, I don't know much about soccer, but if you get hard up, just call Jeff.
Will do.
Was walking club at 5:30 AM or PM?
Oh, PM. Thank you, Councillor. Oh, PM. Thank you, Councilor Johnson.
Susan, I have a question also. I think Remy would do it at 5:30 or 5:30 AM or PM, from what I've seen of her walking habits. Susan, you may have shared this with us in a previous meeting, but I kind of forgotten. What is the the plan or the or the approach that you're taking with pool reopening? Are we waiting for us to go down to the next safety level? Or can you can you give us a little insight into timetables? Because I've had questions about that from community members.
Yeah, I know there's been a little bit of chatter about that out there. Right now there's under the extreme risk categorization that we are currently in and are staying in for the next couple of weeks, we can open pools with a maximum of six swimmers. Right now for us to implement that would probably not be cost effective. We had hoped that today we would be hearing that we could move into the high-risk category, which would have allowed us to be a little bit more open and doing things differently. But I just met with the swim club today, and we right now are not comfortable moving forward with opening indoor activities in the extreme risk category. But we're not totally closed off to it if if we end up staying in there for a lot longer. But hopefully, we're on the way down in all of our tests and numbers so that we can move into the high-risk category.
Yeah, thank you, Susan.
Thank you, Sal. Thank you, Susan. Any other items to report, Susan? Okay, let's go to Jenny.
Hi, thank you, Mayor and councilors. So our home delivery of library materials continues to increase, and we're over, I think we're almost up to 1,100 people that are signed up for home delivery. And also, another thing that has been high on the priority list at the library is working with AARP volunteers to offer free tax assistance to people. And while as library staff, we're not allowed to legally able to give tax information, we do a lot of managing of this program so that the AARP volunteers can serve people in our community. And we've got over 250 people waiting for tax assistance through this program at the library. And I also just want to say thank you so much for this presentation this evening at the work session. It was fantastic, and I am so proud to be part of a city that and a city government that is open to that that type of information and presentation. It's thank you very much.
Thank you, Jenny. Let's go to Scott Burke.
Nothing for the council tonight. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Scott. Let's go to Jennifer.
Good evening. I also have nothing to report. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. I'll let's see, I see Heather on the line. Heather?
Yeah, good evening, Mayor and councilors. I too want to thank you for that presentation that we had during the work session. I haven't seen it before, and it's always very thought-provoking. I wanted to let you know that as a planning team, we are having similar discussions amongst ourselves and with the Planning Commission. There are things that we see that have occurred here in McMinnville, either intentionally or unintentionally, that we want to sort of bring to the fore and also talk about how we move forward as a community. We're working on what that looks like and 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 the type of data that we're collecting right now relative to that. So we will continue to work on that and bring something together.
Thank you, Heather. I see Chief is at the at the at the table. Go ahead, Chief.
Mr. Mayor and counselor, just wanted to let the the council know that late in January, we're in Lafayette recognizing a group of people who helped an individual or survive a cardiac arrest. The Fire Department has an award called the Chain of Survival Award, and it recognizes everything from bystanders through YCOM dispatchers, through law enforcement, local responding fire departments, to our medics. And so we had a group, socially-distanced group, met at the Lafayette Fire Department with the bay doors open to ensure proper circulation of air. And we we recognized that crew, the law enforcement officers, the Lafayette Fire Department, are members of our our fire department, Scott Law, Chad Jones, and Cody Scholz, with the life-saving Chain of Survival coin. In order for our teams to receive that coin, the the survivor of the of the cardiac arrest has to actually leave the hospital and go home and and be not on life support. So it's a it's a it's a success for the entire team. And this is Heart Month, so it's just a little sugar on the coating for the for the Heart Month for the for the team to help that gentleman survive.
Well, Chief, thank you for participating in that, because I think that's great recognition. Is Chief Skills at the City Hall?
Yes, sir.
Nothing to report, sir.
Thank you, Chief. Jeff?
Can I just kick it back to Jenny and give her the opportunity to talk about the Mac Reads collaboration with Lynnfield University? Unfortunately, there were some technical issues, so you didn't miss anything yet. But Jenny, can you talk about the Mac Reads collaboration for just a couple of seconds?
Definitely. Oh, yeah. Okay. Thanks, Jeff, for talking about that. So I did talk to you at the last meeting about Mac Reads and how it's focusing on a documentary series and then two books. And the documentary series is our first focus. It's Race: The Power of an Illusion, and it's available through the library streaming service, Canopy, and also on DVD. And we are the plan was to have three different discussion sessions on Monday evenings in February. Last night was the first scheduled session, and unfortunately, there was some pretty major technical difficulties in it. The discussion did not happen. Or however, there is a plan for this coming Monday and the following Monday for more discussions on the documentary. And I, you know, it's a pretty, in terms of of things, Mac Reads, it's a pretty light lift in regards to, you know, watching an hour-long section of the documentary and then having a discussion, an hour-long discussion about it. And we'd certainly love to have more people participating in that conversation. And while the technical difficulties created not a good evening last night, I'm sure that it will be a very smooth sailing this coming Monday. And you are all invited to that. You can find a link on the McMinnville Library homepage to the it will be a it will be a Zoom session that is then streamed to YouTube, and there will be ability for audience participation through the comment section in YouTube. Am I covering what you were thinking, Jeff? Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you, Jenny, and back to Jeff.
Thanks, Jenny. Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of reminders for the community. The Annual State of the City and Mayor's Awards Program will be this Thursday evening at 5 o'clock. It will be on the Zoom. So join us virtually. And as the mayor indicated, the fireplace at the senior center works really well. So wear light clothing, Mayor, on Thursday. And then just a reminder that Sarah Singer-Wilson will be facilitating a team-building session for the city council, the city attorney, the city manager, and the city recorder at Civic Hall in the council chambers from 1 to 5 this Friday. You will be socially-distanced and hopefully enjoy your time with with Sarah Wilson. That's all I have tonight. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Jeff. And again, looking forward to Thursday and the State of the City and the awards presentation of the Mayor's Awards. I think I want just to briefly recognize a number of people that have been working so diligently on on that event. We've got Noel, and we've got Nick that have been putting together the videos that we're going to use in the awards presentation. We've got Claudia, and we've got Susan that have been so very helpful in organizing and get thoughts and the things together. Scott Burke and his group that are going to be involved in the virtual aspect of it. And then MCM is going to be recording it, but is going to have their high-definition equipment there so that we'll have a great picture. And we're going to link right into the hardwire and not Wi-Fi, so we're going to have great reception to that. So again, we've got a lot of people on the line, a lot that are a part of our DEI committee that I would invite you guys to be a part of that also. And so you can just go right to our website and and get all the downloaded information to be able to get on the Zoom call. With that, I just remind everyone that a part of our packet was the November 2020 Cash and Investment Report. That takes us to our next level or agenda item, which is a Consent Agenda. I'll ask if any councilors would have items removed from the Consent Agenda and heard on the regular agenda. We only have one item tonight. If I don't hear anything, then I'll ask for a motion to approve the Consent Agenda as presented.
So moved.
Second.
It looks like Chris moved and Zach seconded. That was a fast one. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed, please signify by saying nay. The Consent Agenda this evening passes unanimously six to zero. That takes us to our new business this evening, and we have two items under New Business. And the first one is the McMinnville Water and Light Commission Appointment, and that is an appointment that is recommended by myself. And then we have discussion about a new appointee, and the council would need to have a motion and second. I just wanted to let you know that at our end of the year, Patrick Feutzen, who had been a Mac Water and Light Commissioner for 10 years, his term, he did not elect to continue his term. It was the very last civic area of participation by Patrick. He loved it so much, but it was the last thing that he kind of had divested himself around. And so we have been looking for the right addition to replace Patrick on the Water and Light. And for many of you, you know Patrick as a CEO of Online Northwest, he brings tremendous insights with broadband, which Mac Water and Light has a bit of a responsibility for because they manage our fiber for the city in their portfolio. After talking to members of the Water and Light Commission, there was a name that continuously came up, and that is Kathy Tate. Many of you may know Kathy. Kathy is the the president of Online Northwest. She brings tremendous knowledge of of the broadband arena to the plate, much like Patrick, but also has a lot of good feel for the interactiveness of using utility pools and those types of things, which are things that we are very involved in at Mac Water and Light. And so what I'd like to do is Kathy's on the line. So Kathy, could you just introduce yourself to the council and just give a little bit of a background? And then we're going to have a discussion. So welcome, Kathy. It's good to see you. You're on mute.
There you go. Okay, thank you. Thank you for having me, and I appreciate the introduction. Big shoes to fill. Patrick and I have worked together for the past 21 years. That's a long time. But we have really enjoyed building Online Northwest here in McMinnville, and I feel like it's a great opportunity for me to get involved with the city and to get to know what's happening, you know, with our utility. And we are very connected to McMinnville Water and Light, you know, through our joint utilities and our resources. And I'm just excited to be able to have the opportunity to to learn more about what's happening and to see if I can bring any value there. So Online Northwest is very proud and happy to be, you know, a business here in McMinnville, and we're excited to, you know, get more involved. So thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, Kathy. And Kathy and I have had a long discussion about the responsibilities and how we're wanting to continue to have more diversity on our on our Water and Light Commission. Right now, we have Tom Tankersley, who serves as the Chair of the Commission. We have former Mayor Ed Gormly. We have Jody Christensen, who's a part of the governor's Regional Solutions Team. And now we'll bring Kathy on if you will have an opportunity to appoint her this evening. And so I will open up for discussion from any counselor on the name of Kathy Tate to serve a four-year term on the McMinnville Water and Light Commission. And so I'll just open it up.
Mayor, this is Sal Peralta. Kathy, it's good to see you. I get to see you. You don't get to see me right now, but it is good to see your face again. Kathy and I worked together, at least in the same office, for a few years when I worked at Oregon Lit the Print. They shared an office for a time. I think very highly of her. I've had an opportunity to see her management skills and her team building from a distance at least, and think she'll be a great addition to the team. Mayor, you mentioned the issue of adding diversity to the Mac Water and Light Board, and I I think Kathy's a great addition. I just wanted to make the suggestion to you, Kathy, as the incoming new board member that will vote on tonight, and you, Mayor, as a member of the Commission, I would encourage you to review Mac Water and Light's charter to see if if there's anything in that charter that limits the ability to place more diverse membership on the board. We had one applicant last year for that board position that I believe was disqualified, who was a dreamer. And I think they were disqualified because of the charter. And so going forward, I would encourage the Mac Water and Light, as we're a city that's committed to diversity, to review that policy and and consider making some changes to it. That's the only comment that I have. And Kathy, I'm definitely a yes vote, so thank you so much for your willingness to serve.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sal, for those thoughts, and I'll I'll take that back to the Commission. Any other discussion before I call for a vote? Hearing no more discussion, then I will ask for a motion to appoint Kathy Tate to a four-year term to the McMinnville Water and Light Commission.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to make a motion to appoint Kathy Tate to a four-year term to the McMinnville Water and Light Commission.
Okay, Remy and Sal, I think you were seconding it?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
And Sal seconding it. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed, signify by saying nay. I want to state that that the appointment of Kathy Tate to the McMinnville Water and Light Commission passed unanimously six to zero. So Kathy, congratulations. I will be calling John Dietz and Tom Tankersley tomorrow morning to let them know of the action that we've taken, and then we can get you oriented and up to speed, working with with the the Mac Water and Light Commission. Thank you, and great, great to have you here tonight, and we'll move forward.
Thank you so much. Have a great night.
Thank you.
Remy, Remy putting on a clinic on how to make a motion.
Zach, I know you like to race forward on the motions, so.
Slow it down. I gotta learn that lesson. Yeah, I'll I'll make sure to slow it down next time.
Okay, our next new business tonight is the 2020 Safer Grant, and I'm thinking that it's really 2021 Safer Grant. But I'll call on the chief to make a presentation as we take a look at the Safer Grant application moving forward. So Chief, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I don't like to correct the mayor, but it actually is the 2020 grant because it's consistent with the 2020 federal fiscal year. So that's why it's that's why it's classed as that as that titled that. I apologize for that.
If I just would, if I would read what they tell me to to read instead of using my logical brain.
No problem, Mr. Mayor. The grant application actually opens to, yeah, all right. I'm I don't want to get you guys sick. The grant application actually opened today, and with council approval, we have a grant grant writing consultant ready to assist us with the application process to provide us the best opportunity. If you recall, when we went through the grant application process, the council reviewed the grant application last year, initially when the grant opened up. And when we made our application, there were matching costs. This time, there are no matching costs for the life of the grant. It's a three-year grant, just like the previous grant. The process is similar to the process. Last year, there are some challenges in this year where they've added in, as they did towards the end of last year's grant application process, retention of employees and rehiring laid-off employees as gaining points within the system. So we'll be competing against departments that actually have laid off or potentially laying off during the application phase. The recommendation, there were three recommendations, or three examples of opportunities or options for staffing. The three used in two different ways, and five shows you, and how we would use five applications, five staff. The reason we selected the number five and made the recommendation at the end for five, last time I did not make a recommendation because of the matching costs associated with that and the challenges that we were having with our reserve budget, our overall reserve budget. This time, since the costs are minimal, comparatively speaking, to the matching costs, I am making a recommendation for five. Part of that, the three, that is a part of that five, was found in our feasibility study to be needed for reserve or relief firefighters, so that we can reduce the amount of overtime required for our firefighters for shift coverage to keep our engine at a minimum staffing level. The additional two will coincide or work with one person, one shift, we have 12 staff on board, and the other two shifts, we have 11. So the extra people would go on to the shifts with 11, so that we can bring our engine staffing up and not have to cross-staff with ambulances, so that no matter what, that engine will always have a minimum of three, and the majority of the time, the engine will have a four-person crew. The reason, those are the, the reason we have stopped at five, quite frankly, is we are still in the middle of consolidation study. We've just recently wrapped up the feasibility study, so we're using the information that we have to make the recommendations that we're having right now. We've had the conversation with the consultant regarding the potential risk of driving up the levy rate as we move into a consolidation with other districts, and how many staff we could support without impacting our partners in the next phase of the operations levy rate. And six was the magic number to not go above, and five made sense with the one we had for the over hire. And the reason I'm bringing that up is the, what we're addressing with these five at this point in time are the challenges that we faced through arbitration with mandatory holdovers, workback. There were significant work issues, and if you recall, some of the dialogue that was in the arbitration documents, these five are focusing specifically on that type of work stress that was placed in the workplace on the firefighters that we currently have. Additional firefighters would be used for response improvements, or response enhancements, or standards of covers, and we haven't done our standards of cover yet as part of our consolidation study. The resolution that's later on this evening will address funding to fund the standards of cover evaluation of whoever is going to be partners within the consolidation district. One thing that I want to be cautious about going above the five and having a potential impact on the levy, not the levy, the consolidation tax rate, once there's a new district, if there's a new district. If we impact that negatively now, we're working to build partnerships and cooperative collaborations with our partner districts. And as we move forward, the challenge that we face is there's a perception of McMinnville being the gorilla in the room and not being a good partner potentially because we're bigger and we're going to do it our way, no matter what. And if we make decisions like, decisions based on, we want this now regardless of what it does to our partners as we move forward with this district, we're basically just playing into the hands of the naysayers of our, of the folks that are out there around this district, and we have to be very cautious about that. So that's why I made the recommendation of five. I'm trying to find a fine line between addressing the workload issues that we have internally, knowing that we have a study coming out to address response requirements for whoever is going to be the new partner in the new district, and knowing that these grants have had continuation, more than likely a continuation, so that if we do want to go and use grants in the future to supplement response requirements, we'll have that opportunity next year or the year after, depending on what the opportunities look like with the grant cycles. So with that, I'll open it up for questions.
Well, let's go ahead and open it up for questions.
Or with that, the mayor can open it up for questions.
And if no questions, we can open it up for just discussion. Adam, I see that you have your hand raised.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Chief, for the quick overview. I was curious, from last May's presentation, sorry about my camera being so cloudy, I was under the impression that the SAFER Grant was more for improving response times and not more, as you were wording it, like overtime relief and mandatory workback relief. Is that, has the terms of the SAFER Grant changed, or is there a way that we're going for that in that angle that we're still going to be, are we have a chance to be successful in this grant? Because I, I'm not opposed to going for five, I just want to make sure that we're going for the right reasons to give us the best foot forward in being improved.
We did speak with our grant writer, and there's two narratives that we'll be approaching this from. One is from the firefighter safety component, which will give us some added points in the mix. And the other side of the coin will be actually not, well, partially will be response times because that, we will be having a fully-staffed engine all the time, which reduces this from a nine-minute average to a six-minute average. And then the other side of the coin is it'll put two additional staff on each fire scene, bringing up those numbers of minimum required on scene for fire calls. So there's three different angles within the creating criteria that the grant writer said that we can apply this concept to.
Okay. And then second would be, how do we plan to utilize the five with them being constrained to, they can't just be, they can't go over 50% of EMS heavy calls? They gotta be, they gotta be majority firefighters, I guess would be a way to put that.
That's correct. So that we'll staff them on the schedule accordingly to meet the grant requirements, so we're not violating the grant. The last thing we want to do is cause everyone in the city to lose their federal grant opportunities because we're in violation of a federal grant requirement. So the airport wouldn't like that, and I'm sure there's probably a lot of other departments would be really mad at me. So we will keep them on the engine at least 50% of the time. So, and the 49% of the time, we can put them on ambulances to respond on ambulances also.
So you'll still be looking to hire firefighter paramedics or firefighter EMTs? You're not just going to hire strictly firefighters?
No, we will continue, we have to hire dual role because that's how our operation works. We get the, we get the best results with the dual role capacity.
Okay, that's all for now. Thank you.
Good questions, Adam. Any other questions or discussion? Go ahead, Chris.
Yeah, I just have a quick question of, maybe this is more a point of order than it is a question to the Chief. Is any proposal we put forward, are we including things like specifically wanting to make sure we have a grant writer that actually writes the grant to help ensure success?
Chief?
That is the plan. That's part of the plan, yes. If council authorizes tonight, the contract will move forward, and the grant writer will be the one that writes the grant.
Any other questions or discussions?
Mr. Mayor, Adam Garvin again. To follow up on Chris's question, Chief, is the grant writer somebody that's specific to like SAFER FIRE grants? Are they just like a local grant writer that's had success applying for transportation grants, or how specialized is this grant writer?
Well, he works for the crabbing industry, so I think he'll be okay. No, Counselor Garvin, he's, the company that we hired to, or will contract with is Lexipol, and they are a public safety, they already are companies that we are in contract with for both police and fire policies and SOGs, and both the City PD and City Fire are in contract with this company. And they have a cadre of grant writers specifically for the federal assistance to firefighter grants, as well as the SAFER Grants.
Okay, and as far as the grant writing goes, do we, I know with the ESCI stuff, we've kind of more focused on the NFPA 1720 standard, is that kind of what we write as far as our staffing and our response times with the SAFER Grant? Or are we still working under that NFPA 1710? I believe it was that we made those 2010 standards underneath.
Right. They've got, they've got a blend within the grant process, and he's still evaluating our department and our system to see which one will give us the best opportunity, because it asks, which one are you applying under and which one do you most meet the standard for? And they have a 1720 urban and they have a 1710, and he's evaluating between the two of them, and let us know what's going to be the best one to apply under for the best opportunity to be successful.
Okay. Thank you for that.
Thank you, Adam. Zach, you have your hand up?
Digitally lower my hand. Thanks, Chief. Let's see, that one was asked. Forgive me if I missed it in the 70-page application you included in the report, but are there, are there any contract language terms in there that give us concern moving to a district for those full-time employees as far as the retention moving forward? That isn't complicated at all?
If there's, as long as they stayed employed with the same department, they should, it should be fine.
Got it. Okay. And then are there any other agencies, departments in our potential district seeking a SAFER Grant at the moment in this round?
Not a SAFER Grant, no. No. Within our, within our collaborative group that we're working on partnering? No, that's, it's not happening.
And then when would we expect to hear back? That same timeline as last year, that September-ish time, or?
August is the initial grant notification start in August, and they tend to roll out as they process the grants. So it could be anywhere for a month or two months after August. Once we're notified, we'll have 30 days to be back to council, where council will, if we're fortunate enough to be successful, you'll have to officially accept the award, and then we'll have to advertise. We won't be able to use an existing list because this grant requires you notify the applicants that they're applying for grant-funded positions. So there's some, there's a variety of different, little different nuances to this one that we'll have to work through on the backside.
Cool. Thank you.
Sal, I see that you're unmuted.
Oh, thank you, Mayor. I just had a comment, Chief. I just wanted to say that I appreciate the timing of this and also the recommendation of five staff members. I definitely wasn't expecting to get that kind of recommendation, and I just wanted to say thanks and that I appreciate it.
My pleasure.
Yeah, and I think it corresponds with the, with our analysis, it goes hand in hand. I think the timing is perfect for us to be dealing with SAFER Grant with the information that we garnered from our consultant and our partners that may be making up that fire district. So again, perfect timing, and it should make it, well, it's made it an easy discussion tonight. So I'll call for any additional discussion. Hearing none, you get ready. I'll ask for a motion to authorize the Chief to move forward with the 2002 SAFER Grant application for five firefighters.
I'd like to make a motion to move forward with the application for the 2020 fiscal year SAFER application of five.
Thank you, Adam. A second?
Seconds.
Second with Remy. All those in favor, please signify.
You waited, Zach.
I was just napping. Garvin's motion put me down on that one.
It was pretty formal, wasn't it?
The second best motion I've heard all night.
Again, we have a motion by Counselor Garvin, and a second by Council President Drabkin. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, signify by saying nay. This, this new business, which authorizes the Chief to move forward with the 2020 SAFER Grant passes unanimously six to zero. That takes us to our resolutions this evening, and to the best of my ability, we have somewhere in the neighborhood of nine individuals that are somewhat new to this call, and I think Remy, myself, and Kylie can say, we have new friends, because we've had a great opportunity to interview the potential of 37 applicants for our DEI opening. And so with that being said, I'm going to turn it over to Kylie to present the nomination of, or appointment of members to our Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion, known as our DEI Committee. Kylie?
Thank you, Mayor Hill, and hello to all of the lovely people that we got to chat with over the last few weeks. It's nice to see you all again. Council, I'll direct you to your packet. There's a staff report in here describing the background of the formation of this council or committee. This is McMinnville's first-ever DEI committee, so we are really, really excited about it, and especially on the heels of a work session which really focused on the racial history of Oregon. It feels really nice to be able to bring this forward tonight. As Mayor Hill said, we had 37 applications for this committee. That was a number I was just thrilled with. Of those 37, 19 came for an interview, so we interviewed everybody over Zoom and narrowed down after a long discussion, and it was very difficult to choose our top seven, but we got to our top seven in this group. So with that, I present to the council the Resolution Number 2021-03, appointing the following folks to our DEI Advisory Committee. Magid Abbo Hebisch, and Mag and I probably did not get that right today, Efren Aradondo, Christine Bader, Tiffany Henness, Tony Lai, Larry Miller, Alicia Overstreet, and our youth representative, Cecilia Flores. We also have a handful of alternatives in case any of these folks are not available to commit to their, to their committee service. You'll also see in your packet that we have two, three, and four-year terms listed out, and that is one of the things that we will cover as a committee next month when we have our first meeting, to determine how we want to stagger our terms, because we can't have y'all getting off of this thing at the same time. We need a little bit of continuity here. So with that, I can entertain any questions. Council President Remkey and Mayor Hill, or Remy Drabkin and Mayor Hill, were instrumental in interviewing all of these folks. So if anybody has any questions, we can talk about those, too.
And so I'll just call on Remy just to do a brief oversight, comments on the process, and then I'll shoot in a little bit, and then any questions of any three of us as we've made these decisions to bring before you. So, Remy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Director Bayer. I will just restate that we were not only thrilled that we had a large number of applicants, but really with the number of exceptionally qualified applicants. And we did offer interviews to everyone that applied for this position, and we tried to offer a number of different days and meeting times as well to make sure that nobody was being excluded from potential service based on inability to access a meeting time. Our, I don't want to, I don't want to steal the, I don't want to, I don't want to take too much time other than to say that the interview process was, was really incredible, and the people that we're recommending, I'd be happy to, to talk more about. incredible and the people that we're recommending, I'd be happy to, to talk more about them individually, but we have people bringing experience to this committee that, that are bringing formal training in terms of DEI work, that are bringing formal training in terms of trauma therapy. We have, we just have so much and I'm sorry, I have all the applications, hold on. Sorry, I saved all the applications, but I moved them off my tiny desk because, because it's a tiny desk. I will just say a couple of things about them briefly. Our youth representative, Sessi, she loves McMinnville. She couldn't have, she couldn't have emphasized more that not only does she love being here, she wants to be a teacher here and looks forward to one day being the principal of McMinnville High School. So Dr. Fast, you've got a predecessor in training. I have a note at the top of Christine Bader's application, which she, the, to even begin to go into the depth of her career experience would only scratch the service. I would say my note at the top of her application says she must be on this committee. And the same with Efren Aradondo, the, the depth of, of experience, including starting with the multicultural student union was a, it was clear that, that you needed to be on this community, committee. I mentioned already Tony Lai's experience in, in, in therapy and trauma-informed responses. We met with and are recommending Larry Miller to this community who has been activating through public school systems as he's moved from Tacoma to McMinnville and with Pacific Lutheran and has been a mentor to many and has helped prepare a number of youth to move forward into the world. We met with and had a wonderful meeting with Alicia Overstreet, who is already a DEI advocate for members of the BIPOC community and members of the disabled community and currently works with a number of, of other committees, including the State Advisory Council and the, and a number of other systems of care boards. We met with Magid and, and heard how he wants to help shape the, the future of McMinnville and, and his dedication and he's come back to us after also applying to the budget committee and, and has been involved in a number of, of steering committees previously. And we really enjoyed especially the methodology and how he's presented initiatives to leadership in his work currently. And we met with Tiffany Hennis, who has worked to increase equity through civic engagement. And so, and I will, I'm not going to do this him for our alternates right now, but the, but we have just an exceptionally equipped advisory committee, which is the role of this DEI committee is to be an advisory committee to the city of McMinnville and I think you will all be very happy to, with the work that'll come out of this committee if, if you choose to appoint these individuals.
Thank you, Remy, for that overview and personalized comments on each of our, our nominees. I can tell you, after a 37-year career with banking where I was in management and I have done many, 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 many interviews and then on the city council and as mayor, I've done many, many, many interviews. And I'll tell you, this group just blew us away as interviewers. The experience, their education, their passion, their vision for what we need to have in this community was outstanding. And that's not to say that, you know, those that aren't a part of it, every single interview was, was phenomenal. And I can tell you though, that we had a unanimous decision-making process. We were all in, in, in alignment with those that we've picked. And so again, with that being said, thank you for, for our candidates to being online and engaged at this meeting. But with that being said, I will ask for a motion to approve resolution number 2021-03 and that is appointing members to the diversity, equity and inclusion, or known as the DEI committee. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, prior to a motion, can I address the future committees before we do that, if I may?
We didn't have to that, so thank you for stepping in there, Zach.
Thanks. I have to get my platitudes out of the way. It's not fair. I, my face hurts from smiling from the last few minutes so much. This is just truly such a joy. I mean, there's a baby on camera. I miss holding babies, just COVID dough. This is so cool. I, I, I just, I just want to say that, you know, every committee and, and group we have that is out there doing work for the city makes this city better in some unique way and, and, and you guys are going to make us so much better and so much more emotionally intelligent. It's, I'm super excited for where McMinnville's going to go with the group of new faces here. I, I, I think it's something to truly celebrate and I also challenge and encourage this group to just absolutely go everywhere, touch everything the city of McMinnville does, shine a light absolutely everywhere. And I want to embolden you to be, to carve your steps, this group's steps, that this committee is going to last a long time, carve the steps deep and wide so we can really do good work for a long time to come. And that's a big challenge, a big lift. We're appointing all of you guys for something brand new. You know, you join the planning commission, you got a pretty good idea of what you're doing. You guys are going to make it, which is super cool. And I hope, I hope we're looking at future counselors, not only future principals, but, but future counselors for this great city. So, and I expect you all to have Tiffany's blue hair too. I think that's going to be the team rallying unity thing here is blue hair. So thank you for your time that you're going to dedicate to this city and your passion and energy. You guys are all great, fantastic people, so thank you.
Thank you, Zach, for those words of encouragement. Any other discussion or comments? Go ahead, Adam.
Just going for the super slow motion, huh?
You're muted now, Adam.
I think it's my internet connection. I've had my video off all night, but I just wanted to thank to everybody that applied and Remy for giving us a breakdown of all the applicants. It was nice to read through our packet and just the diversity that you guys are putting in front of us to appoint is excellent and I really look forward to what they, they put in front of us as policymakers and how we can make the city better and more inclusive for all. So great group that you guys are pushing forward to us and I look forward to voting yes on this tonight.
Thank you, Adam. Any other comments? Discussion? Go ahead, Kelly.
I just want to say welcome to all of you. I assume we're all going to vote for you because I can't imagine it's not and just say how thrilled I am that you're all here tonight and you're excited about this. It's really wonderful and I read all of your stories and I thought they were fantastic. So you're wonderful.
Great. Okay, any other comments? Hearing none, then I will move forward. I will look to Zach to see if I can move forward. I think I can.
Uh, yeah, go ahead.
So we are looking, asking for a motion to approve resolution number 2021-3.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move the appointment of all seven candidates to the diversity, equity and inclusion committee and congratulations to those who are about to be appointed.
I have a motion by Sal and a second by Kelly. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed, please signify by saying nay. Resolution 2021-3 passes unanimously six to zero. Congratulations.
I voted aye twice.
Thanks, everyone, and again, thanks for coming and being a part of this part of our meeting. That will take us to our next resolution and that is resolution 2021-6, a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter a personal service agreement with Emergency Services Consulting International for a cost budget analysis and standards of cover for work related to the fire department consolidation efforts. And so, chief, I'll call on you to bring us up to speed of where we're sitting and what we're trying to accomplish this evening.
Mr. Mayor and counselors, thank you. Before you, this evening, the resolution that we're requesting will be the final components to the work study that we've been working on. Originally, they were not part of the contract that we, we consult, the professional services contract that we hired ESCI to do. During the feasibility study, at the end of the feasibility study, the consultant company recommended these two additional projects so that we could ensure that, we wanted to make sure that the new district, whatever the new boundaries would be, we could have an adequate understanding of the response requirements for that district and the, the input would be from all of the partners that were going to be a partner in that district so that we could better establish the new tax rate for the district and have a better understanding what the funding sources would be and the expenses would be required to provide the service levels in those, in that, that new district. So we, the reason we're here for, before council tonight, this contract in itself is not necessarily require council, council authorization because of the amount, but it combined with the previous contracts that we've had pushed the, the, the level of authority above the city manager's authority for, for professional services. So we're asking for council approval this evening for the resolution to help us move forward with this project.
Okay, thank you, chief. You've had a good write-up in our, in our packets tonight, but I'll open it up for any questions or discussions for the chief or for discussions among council. Okay, I see no questions or discussions, so I will ask for a motion to approve resolution 2021-6.
It's been moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Kelly and seconded by, I think that was Chris. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed, please signify by saying nay. Okay, resolution 2021-6 passes unanimously six to zero. Okay, thank you, chief, and thank you, council. I will now adjourn, adjourn our council meeting this evening at 8:18 PM and so I close the city council meeting. We will move directly into our city council urban renewal agency meeting and I will call the meeting to order and ask Claudia to do a roll call.
Council Garvin?
Here.
Council Geary?
Here.
Council Minkie?
Here.
Council Chenoweth?
Still here and accounted for.
Council Peralta?
Here.
Council President Drabkin?
Here.
And Mayor Hill?
Here. Thank you, Claudia, for taking that. This evening, we are going to have a resolution and a resolution 2021-1, which is a resolution of the McMinnville Urban Renewal Board approving the annual financial report for the McMinnville Urban Renewal Agency for fiscal year ending June 30th, 2020, per the Oregon revised statutes 457 dot 460. And so we will call on Planning Director Heather Richards to present. Heather? And I, and I'll recognize Walt Gao, who is the chairman of MIRAC, is here also.
Yeah, so good evening, Mayor and counselors. We hadn't anticipated you'd be sitting in your seats for three hours when you got to the urban renewal agency discussion. We had a couple of things we wanted to talk to you about, which was our annual report and annual, and accomplishments past year. And then we usually during this meeting also bring to you the draft work plan for the next year and we particularly wanted to talk to you about a big project in that, the Third Street Streetscape Improvement Project. So I'll leave it up to you based on your time and patience of whether you want to go through all that or not. The annual report we need to do tonight because it is statutorily required and has a timing associated with it. Claudia, if you can give me sharing, parts, sharing capabilities, that'd be great. Excuse me. Thank you. So we don't have the opportunity to come to you very often to talk about the urban renewal agency and what it is doing and you do service the board for that. This is a time when we're able to come to you and share with you what the annual accomplishments have been and what the next year's plans are. We have to do an annual financial report for the fiscal year ending, the previous fiscal year and then we need to do it in January. This is spelled out in statute, ORS 457.460, and this is fairly tightly negotiated, this particular reporting mechanism between special districts and the Oregon Urban Renewal Agencies. And the intention of this is that the urban renewal agencies are every year filing their activities for the past year with both the city and then all overlapping taxing districts. So we do, in the, in the past two years, this particular part of the legislation has been changed to update it for two things. One, that we have to actually mail this annual report to every overlapping taxing district. And then we need to provide notice of availability in the local newspaper twice prior to March 1, so we need to have this available for the public to look at too. What's in the report is spelled out in the statute in, in terms of how we move forward. Just a couple of things to point out to you that I think are interesting that we talked about at MIRAC and just to let you know, I presented to MIRAC and they did vote to recommend this to you, is that we do put into the annual report every year what the property taxes collected in the previous fiscal year was. So that's a great way to look at where the increment is and, and what's happening with that. In McMinnville, we have a debt service fund that the property taxes comes into. We pay our current debt out of that, which is our bank loan that we're paying and then we transfer the remaining funds into what we call our urban renewal fund and that's where our project and expenditures fund is. So MIRAC asked me to, to do a little study on where are we at in terms of our forecast for tax increment and what has been actually realized. And so I put that together for them and this represents that chart. We're a fairly young agency, so there's not a lot of trend here yet. In 2012, when the city was looking at putting the agency together, it commissioned a feasibility analysis and had a low growth scenario and a medium growth scenario. You can see what they forecasted every year in terms of the annual property taxes. What I think is interesting in here is that there's a bump here in 2000, between 2017 and 18, pretty significant one, where it doubles and that's unusual to see and in the, if you look at the financial scenario, there was- And if you look at the financial scenario, there was an anticipation of 11 and 1/2% growth rate over that year. So some big project was anticipated to occur in this timeframe. The financial feasibility was revised in 2014 when the city adopted the plan, and so it was revised to these numbers. And then in 2016, the city said, we might have been a little aggressive, I think, with our forecasting, and we're just about to go out for our debt for the Alpine Avenue project. Let's make sure we're comfortable that we have the increment coming in to pay the debt and be sustainable with it. And so the city commissioned, or the Urban Renewal Agency commissioned another financial report and feasibility forecast, and those numbers were revised to this, which are significantly lower than what you see over here. And then after we undertook the debt, our finance director then put together what she was seeing and revised the Eco Northwest report. It's slightly different, it's just trending a little bit lower. And then this is our actuals right here. So if you look at our actuals, we're close to what the 2016-17 reset was. We're a little bit higher than that, so that's good. We're trending on the trend line that we had anticipated and just a little bit better. We are not even close to these numbers right here, which was originally what was proposed. The annual report also shows where we spent the money, and it's, we identify it based on the projects that are outlined in the plan itself. And so we go through how much money we spent in the past year. This past fiscal year was fairly conservative in terms of expenditures, and I think that's for two reasons. One, MIRAC has had some deliberate decision-making that they want to fund the Property Assistance Program to try and get some tax assessment value on the ground and increase the tax increment in preparation for doing another large public improvement project down the road. And then that they also want to save funds and push it into future years so that that larger project can be funded. And then last year also represents when COVID occurred, and we had an interruption in terms of what we were doing and the projects that we were moving forward. We did loan $41,000, though, to the Bindery Event Center, and they converted an old warehouse into an active vital space, and we're excited about that. Unfortunately, COVID happened right after they opened up, but we think there's a lot of opportunity for that project in the future moving forward. Oh, I'm sorry, that's a repeat of the other one, so. And then the other thing to understand, this is new for our reporting, that the special districts asked us to put into the report, and so it's now statutory requirement, which is an accounting of our maximum indebtedness. So maximum indebtedness is how much money we can spend on projects, essentially. Think of it that way. When we adopted the plan, we adopted it with a estimated cost per project based on current value of dollars when the plan was adopted. And then it's expected that those projects will be implemented over the course of the plan, 20 to 25 years. So the cost of that project's going to, you know, rise in terms of inflationary rate based on when we implement it. So we adopted a plan with $18 million worth of projects. We estimated with inflationary rates, it will be about $30 million in total to implement the plan, and that's our maximum indebtedness, and then we calculate where we're at with that. So right now, what you're seeing is, this is the cost of the Alpine Project, so the debt that we've incurred and we're paying off, and this is additional money that we've invested into other projects in the plan, including administration, because that's one of our projects. And so we've spent about $2.7 million of our maximum indebtedness and have about $27.3 million left. What's not included in the maximum indebtedness is the interest that we pay on the debt. So it's only the principal amount that we're including into the maximum indebtedness calculation. The financial feasibility report for the adopted plan shows our total increment that we'll probably be investing in the Urban Renewal Agency will be somewhere between $37 and $38 million, based on the interest payments. And then this is what's important to the overlapping taxing districts. This is what we call forgone revenue. So this is, if they were collecting all the taxes in the Urban Renewal District, this is the money that they would be collecting, that they're not collecting today. It's a little bit of a misnomer because as the Urban Renewal Agency continued, if it's successful and it's doing the right thing, it's investing in projects that are stimulating new investment in the district and creating new tax base. And without, presumably without that Urban Renewal investment, that new tax base would not be occurring. And so these money wouldn't be needed and going taxing districts. But we do calculate this because, based on state law, when we get to a certain number in terms of our forgone revenue, we start to distribute those funds that are in the increment to the overlapping taxing districts. So what's happening in McMinnville is we invested in Alpine Avenue. We're starting to see new construction projects in that area, and so that's an example of Urban Renewal doing what it should do. So that's the Urban Renewal Report, and the resolution is specific to that. And then I do have some slides that talk about what we've done since June 30, and then to talk about the Third Street Streetscape Improvement Project. So Mayor, it's up to you how you want to move that forward.
I'll just open that up to council. How much longer would it take to go through our accomplishments and then the Third Street?
I think about 10 minutes, maybe, 10, 15 minutes.
I'll go ahead and speak on behalf of the council. Let's move forward and go through this, because these are exciting slides.
Okay.
Exciting stories.
So we talked about what we've done for the fiscal year ended June 30th, but we're in January, so it feels a little awkward to say that's our accomplishment. Since, in the last six months since July 1st, the agency has actually been really effective and busy in our business community. So we also closed on a loan for $71,000 for a new construction project on Lafayette Avenue in the Northeast Gateway District that we call Granuary Row. This is approximately a $650,000 project, and it's under construction now. And so that's a great example of Urban Renewal working. And then the Urban Renewal Advisory Committee made a decision with the advent of COVID that they wanted to leverage the Urban Renewal Funds the way they could with facade improvement grants in such a way that it helped businesses in our community, especially in our Urban Renewal District. And so they put together a Business Recovery Facade Improvement Grant Program, which is a $5,000 grant program, but only requires a 10% match. Our normal program is dollar per dollar, so for every dollar you put in, you get a dollar in grant funds. In this regard, it was every dollar you put in, you get $9 in grant funds. So it's a great program. And what we wanted to do is get the money out there to help businesses and the property owners make those improvements that they've been putting off and needed to make while things were shut down. And then also let businesses who needed to either get new awnings or signage or something like that so that when the opportunity came to open up again, that they, you know, they had this new presentation. We wanted to be able to help fund that. And the other thing it did was it put money into the community to vendors and contractors as well, so other businesses, too. So anyways, the agency awarded $102,000, more or less, of Business Recovery Facade Improvement Grants to 29 different Property Assistance Projects. And the projects that came in were much like what we had anticipated, so replacing awnings or painting buildings, or in this case, it was refurbishing this tile network that's on the stairwell here. So small improvement projects, but something where we were able to help property owners, business owners, and vendors and contractors in our community. So that's been very successful. In terms of the budget for next year, MIRAC's been walking through this and talking about it. We have 13 projects in our plan. So when we talk about the Urban Renewal Plan, we talk about it in regards to projects. And here's the funding authority for each of those projects. And like I told you, there's $18 million of projects. And then these all get calculated forward based on inflationary rates that's amortized until they get started. And this is the timeframe in which people anticipate the projects would happen. Several of these projects, I want to point out, happened earlier rather than later, these ones right here, because they were part of the Transportation System Bonds, and they actually weren't paid for out of Urban Renewal Funds. They were paid for out of the general obligation bond that the community passed. So that's these four projects right here, and that will be important as we talk about the Third Street Project. But you note the big project here on the list that we haven't done yet is the Third Street Streetscape Improvement Project in terms of timeframe. So MIRAC uses that. They've had a five-year strategic plan that they've been working on based on those projects that have included funding administration, doing a downtown plan, because there's lots of moving parks and parts and discussions out there about property improvements and public improvements, and we want to make sure that everything's connecting cohesively and that we're leveraging effectively. And so there's been these discussions of a downtown plan. We put it off till 2020 because we wanted to wait till MDA was in a good place to help lead that effort. The Development Assistance has been ongoing, and a very strategic deliberate decision to fund this upfront so we could get some tax increment on the books, so we could do public improvement projects. Public Parking's been ongoing. And then the Third Street Improvement Project is something, that's our next big project on the horizon that we've been working towards. For this next year, the MIRAC decided they wanted to add one project to our overall five-year strategic plan, which is housing development. And this builds off of the City Center Housing Strategy that the Urban Renewal Agency helped to fund. It has some goals and actions in the strategy that are, that are specific to funding incentive programs to help incentivize new housing in the downtown area. So MIRAC wants to look at those, they want to look at regulatory barriers as well and start working on those goals and objectives. So they wanted that to be part of the overall strategic plan that we're working on right now. So with that, we start talking about how to populate money into the different projects for next year's budget. And this is the recommendation that they're working on right now. And what it does is, the MIRAC has made a deliberate decision, they've made the decision in the past to fund Development Assistance. Now they really want to start funding the Third Street Improvement Project. And the reason for that is, we visited with Sierra Architects that was helping us in the first phase, right here, with that project, putting it together. And they brought to the table that the federal administration is going to release a very large infrastructure stimulus package. And those projects that are in a project-ready state will be able to compete for those funds. A project-ready state means that you have 30% design documents for the project ready to go. And so since this has been on the horizon, we've been talking about it, MIRAC made the conscientious decision that it was worth the investment to try and get to those 30% design documents so that we were in a project-ready state to be able to leverage for those funds. And that's what they wanted to visit with you about tonight. And then there's talk, there was discussion about also putting funds into the Downtown Master Plan as we start talking about the Community Center and the Aquatic Center and other moving parts that are occurring downtown and how to sort of cohesively put all this together. So in terms of the Third Street Streetscape Plan, we're at some decision-making points, and MIRAC wanted to bring that to you as the agency to get some direction. So thus far, we've created a project advisory committee, and they met over a year ago, over a couple of different meetings. And they reviewed the history of downtown planning in McMinnville. They looked at the existing conditions and evaluated them. They looked at best practices in other communities. And then they put together a project charter with vision, goals, and objectives. And this is a sample of the vision, I'll go by that. I'll send this to you, and you can read the vision for yourselves. But in terms of the next steps, we are now at a point where we need to define the scope of work for the project. And really, that scope of work is, how many blocks are we doing in terms of the project as a whole? And are we just talking about streetscape furnishings? Or is this project going to include something bigger than that, such as street and sidewalk reconstruction? Because going through the existing conditions evaluation, it is very clear that we have deteriorated conditions in terms of our sidewalk infrastructure as well as our street infrastructure, especially for stormwater retention. And then the opportunity to develop these 30% construction documents in the next two years for that infrastructure stimulus package. So the Urban Renewal Plan has $2.5 million in it, authorized in it, for this Third Street Streetscape Improvement Project. As we all know, after going through the Alpine Avenue Project, that's not a lot of money for a full sidewalk reconstruction project, especially over the length of Third Street, which is several blocks long, 10 to 12 blocks, depending on how you describe it. And so in the project description for the Urban Renewal Plan, it talks about designing and constructing streetscape improvement projects that could include undergrounding of overhead utilities, gateways, directional signage, landscaping, street improvements, lighting, streetscape amenities, and then redesign the midbuck crossings, public art, et cetera. So it's a lot of the above-ground, what I would call frosting elements, so the amenities that we all notice as people interacting with the street, but not necessarily the structural infrastructure. And when we went through the evaluation of the existing conditions, none of these pictures are anything that anyone's surprised about. We do have existing conditions in the downtown on Third Street where we do have serious infrastructure concerns. This is the street trees lifting the sidewalks. This is sidewalks that are cracked and raised and at grades that are not ADA compliant. We have stormwater retention issues, so drainage issues on Third Street and the sidewalks as well. And with COVID, there's been a lot of discussion of, do we rethink how we use the public right of way to support our businesses? We have very narrow sidewalks. Are there opportunities to design in such a way where it could be more flexible? If we want to include sidewalk repair and street reconstruction and utility improvements and stormwater fixes, how do we pay for that? That's the question in front of us. And there's two ways. There's an opportunity to amend the Urban Renewal Plan, to remove those projects that I highlighted to you early on, the Fifth Street, the First and Second Street Project, the Downtown Signals, and the Second Street Separate Project that were identified in there, that were also identified in the Transportation System Bond and paid for by the bond. And so there isn't the same need for Urban Renewal to pay for those projects, so those funds could presumably be applied to either this project or other projects. We kind of amend the plan if we stay within the maximum indebtedness and we're achieving the same objectives in the plan. And that amounts to about $4 million. And then we also have the opportunity to try and be in that responsive position for federal funds. We did add this project to what we call the SEDS Program for this region. The SEDS Program is our Regional Economic Development Strategy Program for federal funds. And so we made sure that this project was added to that in 2019 as a, to get in advance of any future federal funds that might be available for it. So it is set up to be responsive for infrastructure stimulus package. So the other question in front of us is, what's the scope of work in terms of how many, how do you choose winners and losers in terms of the blocks downtown where these improvements are made? And so when we first put it together with the Project Advisory Committee, we were talking about Adams to Johnson. Just recently, when we were having the discussion with MIRAC and the architectural consultants, we had a discussion about Adams to Galloway, that that might make more sense, especially with limited resources. But that will take significant architectural and engineering investment over the next two years. We did have our consultant put together a cost proposal estimate for this project to get it to 30% construction documents, and we're looking at about $450,000 to $800,000, depending on how, what the scope of the project is. And this assumes sidewalk and street reconstruction in these numbers, and then how many blocks it entails. And Urban Renewal has $50,000 budgeted this year for the project and another $150,000 budgeted next year. So that's 200, and there's the opportunity to do some additional investment in the future year past that. But we don't have the funds for the full $450,000 to $800,000 needed to get this into that responsive state for infrastructure stimulus package. So the question MIRAC had was, is there an opportunity for the city to participate in funding the architectural and engineering for this project over the next two years and partner on it, much like the Alpine Avenue Project was a partner project? Now with that said, the Alpine Avenue Project was part of the Transportation System Bond, so it didn't come out of our regular sustainable funding source. so it didn't come out of our regular sustainable funding sources. Right now, in the, Mike is working on the street fund right now. And with COVID, there's been a decrease in street funds because that's gas tax. People are driving a lot less. And it already has a lot of pressure on it. We're, we're looking at trying to fund a transportation system plan based on your direction to update that plan here in the near future, with that fund and some other funds as well. And so, it's, it, it doesn't feel like there's funding available in that street fund to help with the architectural and engineering costs for this project. But we wanted to come to you, MIRAC, to talk about, how do we move, how should we move forward? We have this project in front of us. We need to start investing in it in terms of putting some design documents together. We have an opportunity in front of us to potentially bring in some significant federal funds to help us fund it. And we're trying to figure out what are our potential partnerships with the city to make this project a reality, and, and what it looks like. So that, that's the extent of the presentation. Walt's here too. He is the Chair of MIRAC and could probably express it more eloquently than I in terms of the partnership opportunities.
Go ahead, Walt. You're on mute. You're on mute. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay. I wanted to thank Heather for that presentation. I think it was pretty thorough. I, I did want to say that, that MIRAC's been very busy, as you've heard. And there's a lot of activity going on, both of the small businesses and large projects, as well as talking a lot about this upcoming future Third Street program. I did want to note that this year, this past year, we saw five major reconstruction projects, which is really ultimately one of the purposes of the urban renewal program. And those included the, the Harold Washington Building, which is now completed, the Taylor Dale remodeling, which was completed, the, the new building next to the Taylor Dale building that is the Kendall Jackson family's new building, which is a replacement, which is, I believe, nearing completion. We also have a major project going on downtown. You've all seen it. First Federal is rebuilding. And that is a major addition to the downtown, as well as the Lafayette project that, Lafayette Avenue project that Heather mentioned. Those are all really going to contribute to the growth of the tax base, which is going to contribute to the growth of the increment and thus the income of the Urban Renewal District, which will in the out-years, two, three, four, or five years from now, enable additional projects to be undertaken and/or financed. The challenge with the Third Street project, as we have been discussing it, is that, do you do a two or three block project and, and disrupt the businesses, and then go back and do another two or three or four blocks? When you can afford to do that, is, are two business disruptions acceptable? And, and do you do a project which does not complete all of your subsurface infrastructure improvements that the city would want to be making over the next 20, 25 years? And I, I think in our discussions, I think it's been fairly, fairly well-agreed that, one, we want to try and do one project with one disruption, and try and plan that, and that, that coordinate that with the McMinnville Downtown Association and the businesses to try and minimize the negative impacts on businesses. And second, that it makes sense to do the entire project, not just a half a project. So the, the, the limiting factor for, from MIRAC in terms of recommendations to the board is the fact that the increment is only growing fast enough to probably finance a two to, two to three and a half million-dollar bond in the next year, two, three, between one and three years out. If, if the project is going to be a five to seven million-dollar project, it's going to require additional funding, either federally obtained or through a combination of sources involving McMinnville Water and Light for, for water and electrical improvements, storm drainage improvements out of storm drainage funds, street improvements out of street funds, if Third Street is, is deemed by the council to be a critical street, which I, I certainly believe it is, but that's the council's judgment. So we need to determine whether this project is going to be financed as a two-to-three block project or as a five-to-six or seven-block project. And that is a critical decision that the council, that the board will need to make, but undoubtedly needing the, the determination by the council as to what level of involvement the city wants to have for its various other departments. So I know that's, that, that's not a decision that, that you can be called upon to make, or should be called upon to make tonight, but it's one that probably deserves a work session in the upcoming months to talk about in more detail. What, what MIRAC would like to do in the coming year is get the planning process started so that we can make a good head start on getting to 30% project documents, so that we can be in a position to be one of those quote shovel-ready projects when funds open up that the city might be able to access to turn, to turn a smaller project into a completed project. So I just wanted to take a moment to make those comments. I'm very proud of the, the hard work that the MIRAC committee members have put in. I am thrilled that we were able to get 29 small grants out to small businesses to help them during this, this year of, of COVID difficulty. And we're looking forward to a very, you know, equally busy year this, this, this coming fiscal year. And we'll need, we'll need to interact with the city council to determine the scope of the planning process and the engineering process that, that we can be authorized to undertake.
Walt, thank you. And let me give you another example that I think reiterates what Walt has been talking about. And that's a project, a small project called the Newburgh Dundee Bypass. You know, that was one that has been done in phases, and it's been over 20-plus years. And, you know, we're just getting to a point where we're with the same dilemma there, you know, of having Phase One, and it's working well, but now the disruption and going to Phase Two and having to, to retrofit some of the stuff that was done in Phase One that's going to add probably, you know, hundreds of millions of dollars to get us where we need to be going. Well, not hundreds of millions, but millions of dollars to get us aligned to where we're needing to go. And so that thought of, you know, if you start a project, finish it. And having the funding to do that, one disruption, costs, the, the, the costs are more contained in today's dollars than pushing it out 10 years because you've got inflation. And so, for those that have been following the bypass, if you, if you put it into Phase One, Two, and Three over time, it, it, it's a lot more work and a lot more money. With that being said, I, I'll, I'll open it up just briefly for questions. But what I would suggest to the council is that we put a, a work session together, because I think it's worthy of us having a much more in-depth discussion and looking at alternatives to give the go-ahead. But then it'd be taken back to MIRAC, who kind of will do the leg work for us and come back and give us some discussion. Would that be what you would suggest, Heather? Okay. Any, any questions from the group?
Do we need to pass the budget or something tonight? Was that critical? No. So the, the only action you need tonight is adopting the resolution for the annual financial report. The budget is, the budget's presented to you as part of the, as part of this, with, in hand-in-hand with the city budget. It's not part of the city budget because they're separate entities, but that comes through the budget process. And then direction on how you want us to move forward with the Third Street project is what we were looking for tonight, too, in terms of process of dialogue.
So, let's see. I've got Zach, and then I've got Adam.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I'm Plan Director Richards, and Mr. Gal, Chair Gal. I, as someone who's wandered the streets of downtown lovingly, I've been hearing about this project for a million years, and so it's fun to see it in front of me. It probably comes no surprise that I'm bullish on the downtown and its association with the city making those reputation far and wide, and local. So as far as where I sit, I, I'm, I'm, I lean more towards more in one shot as soon as, as makes sense. Those are the three areas that we're talking about. You guys sort of referred to two, two to three block range versus bigger range. Clicked through that presentation. Did you have a recommended zone in there? And if, if possible, can you tell me which, what those blocks were?
Let me, let me just say, I think the majority of our discussions have focused on Adams to Galloway, with some improvements on either Fourth Street and/or Galloway to create a transition and a connection to, from Third Street to the Granary District. So, so there's some improvements to get from Third Street to Fifth Street, which has already been improved, in order to make it more pedestrian accessible for people to transition from one part of downtown to another.
And then, and then as far as numbered streets, you stating with Third, are you incorporating Second and Fourth in that calculus for that A to G street range?
Just Third Street right now has been under dialogue. There have been recent improvements on Second Street and First Street as part of the transportation bond, and then Fifth Street as well.
And then what about Fourth? Have you guys talked about Fourth?
We have not talked about Fourth. And again, there's no, there's no funding in the urban renewal plan for Fourth, but that could be part of an amended plan discussion.
Have you thought about and talked, I also am in favor of a work session to talk more about this. Have you thought or talked about how sort of that, all of the players in the EID who fund some of those efforts will feel, if it's, if, will they feel left out or neglected from this project? Or will they sort of all feel, does that question make sense, right?
Yeah. And just to clarify, we're not talking about the EID. We're talking about the urban renewal district. So all property owners participate in the urban renewal district. That includes the Northeast Gateway area as well as the downtown area. So the MIRAC has talked about that. There was a significant investment. And if you look at the, the plans, I mean, when the work session, we can go through it in a little bit more detail, the projects that are in the plan, there's projects identified in Northeast Gateway District as well as the downtown area. And if you look at the timeframe for the projects, they sort of ensure that you're investing in the, in the Northeast Gateway District and the downtown area, you know, near term and long term. So we just did a big investment on, on Alpine Avenue. That was the first big public improvement project in the Northeast Gateway area. And so now the discussion is Third Street.
Okay. The numbers you put up in the slide around, there was a $4 million figure, there was a 300, there was a $400,000 to $800,000 range. Can you refresh me what, what the, to get to 30% plan set, for architecture and engineering, what was the number? And then what did that number correspond to with a projected construction budget for that scope?
No. So we don't have a, we don't have a projected construction budget. If we did a full street improvement and sidewalk improvement project, the, you know, the going rate on a big scale is typically a million dollars a block, city block. That's been a fairly standard rate. But, and that, and that is what Alpine Avenue came in at as well. And then the $4 million figure is the amount of funds that were plugged into urban renewal projects that were paid for by the transportation bond. So we, there's the opportunity to reallocate those. And then the number for A and E for the project to get it to 30% construction documents, and this, this has a 25% contingency built into it, is $450,000 to $800,000. And that's based on the number of blocks that are part of the scope of work.
Is there a corresponding range generally to what you pay in A and E versus what the construction runs? You know, just sort of architects drive their fee off of a percentage of your total construction?
I, I don't see Mike on the phone, and so I would typically defer that to him. In my past, when I was doing project management in Redmond, we usually were looking at somewhere between 10 and 15%.
Yeah. 10 was, was my, gonna be my guess. But, okay. Well, cool. Thank you. I, yeah, I would love to get a work session on this and dive into more, look into the plans and having that discussion. But I think I'll reiterate my position is I'm bullish on this project and the downtown. So, yeah, figuring out how it relates to the impact of what we've, this council has discussed as a much-needed transportation system plan update as well. But like anything, there's lots of things to do and not enough resources to do them all. So anticipate the horns wagging.
Thank you, Zach. Let's go over to Adam.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Heather, and Walt for the presentation. Couple comments was just kind of what, what's the driving force of Galloway versus Irvine or Adams versus Baker's, as far as like starting and ending points with that Granary Connection kind of being right there at Irvine instead of going through more of a residential area? You could have it go through a commercial area where people could still build out of potentially a larger Third Street. And second to that is, you know, definitely in favor of a work session. I would be in support of getting anything shovel-ready and be in support of, you know, position for city funds to leverage grant matching. But as far as it being priority one over like a TSB plan or a floodplain improvement plan, I don't know if I could get there with us going through with the UGB expansion. I see those two things as being more of a priority for me personally.
Thank you, Adam. Any other discussions or comments, leanings?
I'm good with the work session.
Thank you, Kelly.
And let me just respond briefly to Adam's question about the connections. The, the discussion has talked about Irvine, Galloway, and Fifth as potential connections. Fifth because it, there, there's been a lot of improvement associated with the new hotel on Fifth that would minimize what you'd have to do to use that as a corridor. But you may, it may make sense from a design standpoint to have more than one pedestrian corridor. And so the question of, of Galloway, Irvine as places where people could take a left and head for the Granary District on Third Street is still up for lots of discussion. And, and quite frankly, there needs to be public input on that issue.
Is there going to be an opportunity as, as part of this process, or maybe as we're thinking about the work session, even a broader reconfiguration of Third Street? I mean, my hometown of Boulder, where I was born, as a result of federal money, completely redesigned their downtown, turned it into a pedestrian mall. And it was one of the most successful projects probably in the country for that type of economic development project. And I don't know if that's the right thing for McMinnville, but I, I do think it's worth it to have a conversation about those kinds of things in, in the context. And I just was wondering if that was something that you were considering, you know, that sort of broad conversation for the work session?
Yeah. So that's a great question. And I neglected to say this, so this allows me to, to bring this up. As part of our, we have had discussion that it's necessary to invest in, in the time and resources so that the community can have a good dialogue about how Third Street is redesigned or improved upon what it is today, because it is so beloved by this community. Before we even go into engineering, the engineering is, is, you know, once you, once you decide what you're going to do, the cost for engineering is doing all the survey work and putting the engineering documents together. But actually coming to a conclusion as to what we would like to do on Third Street and what it means in terms of serving our future community, that's, that's a fairly complex dialogue to have and a necessary one, and one that needs a lot of community engagement. So we have, part of that fund, the amount of money I told you, $450,000 to $800,000, does include contracting with Sierra Architects here over the next six to eight months on what we are calling Phase B of the project, which is having that discussion. We went through existing conditions. We went through case studies. Boulder, actually, is one of the case studies they brought to us. And so now the next step is really, let's get down into the nitty-gritty and figure this out. And then we, then we go out for an RFQ for architectural and engineering. So we do have, we have funds to be able to contract with Sierra Architects to do that very discussion that you just brought up. very discussion that you just brought up, counselor.
And part of that process is for them to look at functional alternatives, street tree alternatives, design theme alternatives, which gets to the point you were just raising, Sal, and an initial design review. And that's tied in with a series of public meetings that are designed to discuss these types of alternative themes and alternative solutions that the architects would look at as far as that preliminary design process.
Yeah. The reason why we have a work session with you is how we're going to fund, if the urban renewal doesn't have money to fund the 100% scope if we do a street reconstruction, sidewalk reconstruction for either A and E or the improvement itself. And so, if that's something that we want to do, we'll want to know that earlier rather than later, or not want to do, we want to know that earlier rather than later in this next 68 months with Sierra Architects, so we can frame the discussion for the community.
Thanks. Well, I think your instinct is right. I think it's a good time to put money towards looking for federal funding for an infrastructure project, because I just feel like they're going to put money towards that coming out of COVID. So, I think your instinct is right. Thank you.
It is, it's nine o'clock now, and so, I think I'm hearing that we need further discussion around a work session. And so, if that's the intent of the council, I'll have staff work with Jeff to put a work session together where we can really have a much more in-depth discussion around the options that we have. I think we've had a good opportunity to have dialogue tonight, but it's going to take much more in making sure very, very other faceted pieces of this are accompanying, especially with the public input, but we have to give some direction as an agency. So, Heather, I'll give that to you, and I think we're at a point right now where we can consider Resolution 202101. And so, a resolution of the McMinnville Urban Renewal Board approving the annual financial report for the Urban Renewal Agency for fiscal year ending June 30, 2020, as per revised statute 457.56, 460. Do I have a motion to approve that resolution?
I move that we approve Resolution 20-2101.
And a second? Second. Chris seconded, Zach moved. All those in favor, please say, signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed, signify by saying nay. Resolution number 202101 passes unanimously, six to zero. We've had a good discussion, we've got materials, and so you can keep that kind of in your queue to look, always knowing that you can reach out to members of MIRAC, Heather, her staff, Walt, and members of MIRAC. So, that was the business we've had, we've had a good discussion. Thank you for almost going on four hours of continuous meetings this evening. So, I will go ahead and at this point adjourn the Urban Renewal Agency meeting. It is 9:07. So, thanks, everyone.
Thank you.